Recording in progress.
May I begin?
One second.
Okay. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Half Moon Bay City Council for March 1st, 2022. This meeting will be held entirely by teleconference. All council members and staff will only participate via the Zoom platform, using the process to be described as follows. The meeting is being conducted pursuant to recent amendments to the teleconference rules required by the Ralph M. Brown Act, allowing teleconference during a proclaimed state of emergency, where local officials have recommended social distancing. This meeting will be conducted via Zoom webinar, and live Spanish interpretation will be available within the Zoom platform. Members of the public are welcome to log into the webinar as attendees. During any public comment portions, attendees may use the Raise Your Hand feature, who will be called upon and unmuted when it is their turn to speak. If joining by phone, use star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute and unmute. And Victor Hernandez, could you please explain the process for engaging this meeting in Spanish?
Gladly, thank you. Madam Mayor, Honorable Council Members, Mr. Nisbet, Ms. Svenberg, and all city staff and community members, Victor Hernandez, Spanish interpreter. Muy buenas noches. Les queremos dejar saber a todos ustedes esta noche que la reunión será interpretada en español. Para poder acceder el canal de audio, haga clic en el botón de interpretación, que será un icono de un globo o mundo, y en la barra de tareas de esta plataforma de Zoom. Después aparecerá un menú, y entonces usted podrá seleccionar el idioma. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Gracias, thank you. So for those who wish to participate by phone, that phone number is 669-900-9128. And we are also receiving Spanish interpretation by Victor Muskovich this evening. Could I please have a roll call? Uh, Councilmember Jimenez?
Here.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Here.
Councilmember Robach?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Here.
Mayor Riddick?
Here.
You have a call. Thank you. So I believe we need a motion to approve the agenda. So move.
Actually, I would like to pull one of the items from the agenda, please. Never mind, forget it, the calendar, sorry.
So just for clarification purposes, asking the city attorney, when is the time to pull items? Is it when we're approving the agenda or when we're considering the consent calendar?
So that can be pulled when we consider the consent calendar, but this will be the time if, for example, you wanted to move a business item up earlier on the agenda to accommodate a panelist, changes like that would be appropriate for the approval of the agenda.
Thank you, my apologies.
That's quite all right.
Clarification, thank you.
I appreciate the clarification, thank you. So we've had a roll call for the approval of the agenda, have we, or no?
No, I just need a second.
Okay. Waiting for a second, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Robach?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Mayor Riddick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for your patience. So we're moving on to public forum, and a public forum is the time to address items that are not on the regular agenda, or if a member of the public wishes to, is it to pull something from the consent agenda, Catherine?
I'll just clarify, if a public can speak on consent items during public forum, but then it's actually the council member's prerogative to pull items based on what we heard from the public, you can, you know, use your discretion to pull an item or not.
Okay. So do we have any raised hands to speak during public forum?
Uh, yes, I have four so far. And for the public's information, we have 21 attendees logged on right now.
I will mute myself, and we can begin the public forum speakers.
Thanks. First speaker is Paulette Eisen. Paulette, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, staff and city council members. I have now spent hours watching and listening to both the public redistricting committee meetings, as well as the city council meetings on the redistricting topic, to try to make sense as to how this became so divisive. Two and a half years ago, Harvey Roebuck enthusiastically proposed that if the city has to go to districting, that this would be an opportune time to have an elected mayor going forward. The rest of the council bought into this idea, and that's why the consultants that were hired came up with the four districts paving the way to have a four-district election and an elected mayor in 2022. So what happened? Approximately eight months ago, it became evident that the new census numbers meant that we would have to make adjustments to the four districts. That's when I basically tuned out. I thought this would just be an easy exercise, but I did fill out the community survey. After watching the January 19th city council meeting, which I just did about four days ago, where Robert Brownstone, Harvey Roebuck, and Joaquín Jimenez were asked by the mayor why they were dismissive of the survey results, I personally felt insulted and disrespected. Why was my voice and 356 others irrelevant? As someone who filled out the community survey on redistricting and was included in the 69% of those who want only four districts and an elected mayor, I felt completely ignored and dismissed. There are many issues that I can talk about as to why and how things went off the rails with this project, but tonight, I want to be constructive with my comments and make suggestions for a path forward, so the city does not repeat what I consider to have been a very flawed process. I think Half Moon Bay, first of all, has to come up with a number, hopefully with the help of a professional statistician, that they deem statistically relevant when conducting surveys, and let the public know that if the city does not get a specific minimum number of responses, that the results will not be paid attention to. I also strongly advocate that we put a choice on the upcoming election ballot as to whether Half Moon Bay wants a four-district map with a two-year mayor, or a four-district map with a four-year mayor, or a five-district map with a rotating mayor. Let the voters decide, not 10 individuals. Thank you for listening, and I hope that these items are on the agenda ASAP. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paulette. Next, we have Jan Hansen. Jan, you're muted. Uh, Jan, you're still muted. Your hand's raised, but you're muted. Can we give Jan a moment and move on to the next person? Come back to Jan. Yeah. So Kristaline?
Hello, thank you very much. I just wanted to let everybody know that this Thursday is the Chamber's annual Coastside Teacher Appreciation Event. So if you're used to it, in the past, it was the supplies party, but we now have moved to gift cards and things like that. So if you would like to support a coastside teacher, please visit our website at hmbcostsidechamber.com, and you can donate, and all donations go directly to the teachers. So we appreciate everybody's support, and we have a record this year of 117 teachers registered for the event, so we want to make sure they all get something when they walk away, and the event will be at Jetty Way. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. And next, we have Mary Bernier. Mary, are you there?
Uh-huh, I am. I clicked the thing that said unmute.
We can hear you.
Oh, super duper, that's good. Last council meeting, Mayor Riddick supported action being taken to assure parents of five-to-11-year-old kids that vaccines, COVID vaccines, were available if they wanted them. Since the last council meeting on February 15, Half Moon Bay's Rite Aid has begun offering these vaccines for kids this age. The Half Moon Bay CVS had begun a little bit earlier. Both their pharmacies are open weekdays until 8:45 and 9:00 p.m. Weekends, they are open until 6:00 p.m., except 5:00 p.m. on Sunday at CVS. Hopefully, a Half Moon Bay organization receiving the county's funding of the community-based outreach partnerships, which was to focus on COVID, will take on very soon the responsibility of publicizing the dates, the times, locations for Half Moon Bay residents so they can get the COVID testing and vaccines. I've been doing these flyers for quite a long time, and it just takes too much time. I have to work on something else, and there's a lot of people, you can't keep up with it. I mean, you could ask the guy who's the main pharmacist at CVS, it changes almost every week, every two weeks. It's nuts. Okay, so to evaluate how many five-to-11-year-olds have been vaccinated, hopefully by now, the health department has provided this information to Half Moon Bay city staff. The question was asked on the 15th. What percentage of eligible kids in Half Moon Bay have gotten vaccinated? Number two, of those children, how many are from Latino families? This is the problem, is that a lot of families who have health insurance, their pediatrician gave them, the kids, the vaccine. Actually, more of those families just brought the kids to clinics because it was free, and a lot of them said they didn't have health insurance, and then they didn't have to pay for a co-pay at their, you know, at their own particular place. But for, especially for people who are undocumented and haven't gone ahead to get the Medi-Cal because of the fear of giving addresses and stuff, and they didn't have the health insurance, they didn't realize there's a rule that says all kids have health insurance, no matter if the parent does or not. So we've still got a lot of, a lot of kids, and I'm afraid are still unvaccinated, but we don't know, so the health department has that information. As was reported last week, two weeks ago, the publicity for the three clinics that were done here in our elementary schools was very lacking. Even schools and staff and parents didn't know about the January 9th one, but school had been out on their break and had just come back, you know, the Tuesday before that Sunday. Okay, that's it, out of time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mary. We really appreciate your vigilance on this issue. Come back again.
Mayor, if I may, I just wanted to add a little bit to that. Starting this Saturday and moving forward on all Saturdays, children five to 11 can go to the Coastside Clinic at 225 Cabrillo Highway and receive a free vaccine between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. People can register on my turn for appointments, but if you don't have an appointment, you can just walk up and they'll accommodate you. So again, thanks to Mary for her efforts, and thanks to the county for making these vaccines more available for our children here on the coast.
Uh, next is Jan Hansen.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, I couldn't get onto Zoom by any other means than my phone. I'd like to just take a minute to give you a brief status report on the outreach efforts to Cuyatay Cove on the redistricting. First of all, I want to say a big thank you to Jessica Blair, our city clerk, who's doing the job of about 12 people right now. I know she's functioning without the help of an assistant city clerk right now, and I know she's dancing as fast as she can, so these are comments more about the whole process. We're halfway through the month-long outreach process, and to date, people in Cuyatay Cove have not yet received the mailer that I understand was mailed recently, so we're standing by to respond to that as soon as we get it. Not everybody goes to their mailbox every day, et cetera, et cetera, so hopefully we'll receive it by Wednesday or Thursday, and if we have to turn around and get the comments back to Jessica by March 10, that's kind of shortened the time from one month to one week. We're doing the best we can, but it's been, it's going to be a tight turnaround. Also, I wouldn't be totally surprised if some of my neighbors say, why are we being asked to comment again? We've already done it several times, so I hope that our comments that we've submitted previously will be included in any tally or report that's given to the council on March 15. I would point out that, as far as I can tell, the vast majority of all the comments received to date, citywide, have been from Cuyatay Cove residents, and nearly all of those comments have expressed a preference for voting this year and not being joined in a district where we don't vote until 2024. I made a quick note, there have been oral and/or written comments from Cuyatay Cove residents on August 19, December 16, January 19, January 27, February 1, and February 15. And I would, I thought I'd take this opportunity, I know when you get your council packets, there's hundreds of pages of material, and I'm urging you maybe to use a little of your spare time between now and the March 15 meeting to review the 21 written comments that came in, they were all from Cuyatay Cove, for the February 15 meeting, they're in attachment five to your packet for that meeting. And also, there were 11 comments received for the January 27 Advisory Committee meeting that were not described in the report and were not attached, but I've asked Jessica, and she said those are public record. 10 of those 11 comments were from Cuyatay Cove. So I would just like to say that, you know, public input has had an impact on getting us back on the original schedule for hearings, but it seems to me, public input, especially from Cuyatay Cove, that's been nearly unanimous from that 503(c), haven't really made much of a dent in the decisions that have been made, and I think it's great that you're doing more outreach and asking seniors in Cuyatay Cove what we want. Please realize that we've been telling you for a long time, nearly unanimously, what we want, and please do pay attention to that. I think that would be a respectful thing to do, and one thing I can say is that one thing seniors do like is to be heard and be listened to, and we have been speaking to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. My next speaker is John Ollin.
Thank you for having me speak. I'd like for you to, hopefully you will discuss the item relating to the disbandment of the Main Street Bridge Committee. It looks like another fiasco as far as financially. My understanding is something like hundreds of thousands of dollars was spent with Briggs Cardoza again to design something that's not going to be built. So I just wonder if you could just explain to everybody what happened, and how much money was, how much money have we wasted or lost in the work that we're going to have to finish paying Briggs Cardoza for? And why were we designing a new bridge or anything like that when we still had a Main Street Bridge Design Committee recommending something else? I really don't understand how this got so messed up. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next speaker is Patty Ramirez.
Sí, me escucha.
Muy buenas noches, señorita. Si me hace usted el favor de mantener sus comentarios así medios cortos para que yo pueda interpretar todo lo que usted tenga que decir y todos puedan escuchar bien, ¿de acuerdo?
Sí, gracias.
Okay, muchas gracias, adelante por favor.
Muchas buenas tardes al, a los concejales. Quiero agradecerles su interés por servir a nuestra comunidad.
So good evening, all council members. I want to thank you for your interest in serving our community.
Como ustedes se habrán enterado, ALAS hizo una vigilia el viernes 18 de febrero.
So as you all know, ALAS had an event on February 18.
Convocando a la comunidad a alzar la voz por el costo exagerado de las rentas.
Asking all of the community to raise their voices in regard to the high rents.
Esa noche nos acompañó el concejal Jiménez haciendo un énfasis en nuestra comunidad.
So that night, Councilmember Jimenez was there emphasizing to the community.
Que nuestra comunidad de los trabajadores esenciales. Si un día ellos no van a trabajar, en un día soldado, eso se echa a perder. Y él nos dijo, pues nosotros también necesitamos estar en una vivienda digna.
So mainly with essential workers, for example, if essential workers don't go to work on, for just one day, you know, like a hot day, then all of that product goes to waste, and we were talking about how everybody should have, you know, dignity in living in a, in a good place.
A nosotros nos, nos hizo sentir apoyados, seguros, de que el concejal nos acompañara.
So with all of that, it made us feel as, that we were supported, safe.
Y vamos a seguir en esta lucha de tratar o de obtener unas viviendas dignas y asexibles para nuestra comunidad de trabajadores esenciales.
And we will continue with this fight in order to have dignified housing and accessible housing.
Esa noche a nosotros nos hizo pensar todas las palabras que dio el concejal Jiménez, de que nosotros también tenemos la oportunidad de obtener una casa en esta área de la costa.
So that night, we really thought about all of the words that Councilmember Jimenez said in regards to us having a dignified housing here on the coast.
Porque como trabajadores esenciales, somos importantes también. Trabajamos para dar todo de nuestro apoyo a esta comunidad. Aunque somos la mano de obra más barata, pero somos esenciales.
Gracias, sí, gracias. So because as we are essential workers, we are important as well. We work as essential workers for this community, and even though we may be the most inexpensive labor, nonetheless, we are essential workers.
Deseo con todo mi corazón que la señora Devin Robert, the mayor, me escuche y pueda poner atención a nuestra necesidad. Estamos en una situación desesperada de viviendas, y no me gustaría ver o saber que la mayoría de las familias se tendrán que mudar. Agradezco toda su escucha y atención a esta necesidad.
Gracias. So I hope with all my heart that Mayor Riddick hears us and pays attention, because we find ourselves in a desperate living arrangement, and it would be really sad to see all the families move out. Thank you for listening. Thank you very much for listening to this need.
Y por último, yo quiero decirles, invitarlos, que el cuarto viernes de cada mes vamos a estar haciendo vigilia tras vigilia hasta obtener una respuesta por parte de la ciudad. Muchas gracias, señor Victor, por la traducción, y muchas gracias al concejal Jiménez por siempre estar ahí para apoyarnos, y gracias a todos los miembros del, del, del Consilio. Buena noche.
Gracias. So lastly, I want to invite all of you, every fourth of, fourth of every month, we are going to continue to have events after events like this until we have some kind of answer in regard to the living arrangements, and thank you, Mr. Victor Hernandez, for interpreting, and thank you also, Councilmember Jimenez, and also thank you all council members.
Thank you. Next speaker is Belinda.
Good evening, city council. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Patty Ramirez, for your words that you just shared, and I am here tonight really and truly to try to talk to not only the city and to all of you, but to everyone listening. We did the vigil and the march for housing, and we saw the sad stories of tears. Two little girls spoke about what their life is like and cried, sharing that they deserve a room, they deserve a place to study, and they deserve a home, just like other children. And so what I'm asking is, I know the city is working on affordable housing, I really, I hear you all when you meet and say, we're looking into this, we're trying to find solutions, so I, I know that's happening. But what I'm asking everyone that's listening on this call and to the city is that, in the meantime, you know, that's years down the road while we think about it being built, while we think about how that comes to be, that we find compassionate landlords. I'm actually asking everyone that's listening, can we have compassionate landlords step up in the city of Half Moon Bay, in San Mateo, you know, on the coast side, and say, I want to rent my home to a low-income, hard-working family? Because this is beyond just the city of Half Moon Bay. It calls for all of us to work together to find solutions. Or can we find, you know, people that want to buy homes and rent those to the community? Because, you know, there's people out there with investment opportunities, can we think about that? What are creative ways that we can come to the table right now and think about getting homes? Because just this week, I got a call, and two more families that I know had to make the decision to leave. One of our longstanding youth leaders that had been part of ALAS since they were kids, you know, had to go move out of the area, and this is happening weekly, so we don't have time to wait. I'm asking to see if there can be a committee, or there can be some type of project put together to look for compassionate landlords. I would also like the city or someone to look into why they're not renting to our Latino families. I mean, we understand why, they're saying because there's too many of them, because they don't have the income, because they don't show the bank statements, but I want to know, like, how does that work in terms of equity and racism? Like, why aren't we looking into, like, practices of why no one's renting to our Latino families? I mean, they're getting turned away every single day. I think that's wrong, and I'm not just talking about Latino families, all Latino families are Latino. And I'm not just talking about Latino families, all low-income families, multiple families across the coast side. Can we take a look at this and can someone say, "Hey, this, we need some better practices around this? This is what's driving our families out." And I know that affordable housing hopefully is coming, but in the meantime, I'm asking for urgency to come up with solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Belinda. And that concludes public forums here. We have no proclamations or presentations this evening. I don't have any announcement of community activities. However, I will mention that it's been reported to me that someone is putting red, white, and blue flyers in people's mailboxes in Alceis-Lorain, I don't know about Quinotico, claiming that people's votes are being stolen by the redistricting process. I haven't seen the flyer myself, but it's been reported to me. But know that if people are putting things into your mailbox that haven't gone through the mail, that's a crime. And you should feel free to report that to the city or the sheriff's office. To the city attorney, do we have anything to report out from recent closed sessions?
No, the council has not met in closed session since my last report out, so nothing to report out.
Mayor Ruddock, we did have a late hand for public forum.
Okay.
Take it.
Let's take it.
Thanks. I want to...
Me escucha. Buenas noches.
Buenas noches. ¿Cómo le va, señorita? Si podría mantener ahora sí lo que va a decir usted en trozos manejables para que de esa manera le pueda interpretar todo y todo mundo pueda escuchar lo que usted tenga que decir, ¿de acuerdo?
Sí, de acuerdo.
Bueno, muchas gracias. Adelante, por favor.
Sí, mire, yo les quiero agradecer nuevamente a todos los que están ahí presentes por escucharnos, a nosotros los hispanos.
So again, I want to thank all of people that are present for listening to us, the Hispanics.
He estado aquí creo que ya varias reuniones, no es una, ni dos, ni tres. Creo que son más de seis reuniones que he estado con ustedes.
So I've been here, you know, many meetings, three, four. I think it's been more than six meetings.
Y hemos estado hablando acerca de la vivienda.
And we've been talking about homes, living arrangements.
Y lo que hemos hecho ahora, yo también estuve en la vigilia, ¿qué hicimos?
So I was also at that event, the vigil that we had.
Y yo viví realmente lo que unos niños dijeron exactamente cómo viven en sus casas.
So I was there to hear some of the children speak about how they were living in their homes.
Y he estado de acuerdo, que yo lo he platicado, que los niños hay veces que son tres niños con sus papás en un cuarto.
And I also agree that I've heard that there's, you know, kids, three kids, you know, living with their parents in a single room.
Donde no tienen su privacidad para hacer sus tareas o la privacidad de los adultos.
Where they don't have any privacy, whether it's to do their homework or the adults themselves don't have any privacy.
Y pienso que seguiremos luchando para que haya viviendas que los latinos o de diferentes razas puedan pagar, pero que nos alcance el dinero para poder pagar.
And I think we will continue the fight for, you know, housing. Us Latinos, not just Latinos, but other people of color where we can have the money to pay for this.
Y lo seguiré diciendo una y otra vez.
So I'll continue to say it once and time again.
Que todos somos importantes en este país.
That we are all important in this country.
Así como el campesino, el licenciado, el abogado, el maestro, todos somos importantes.
Just like the farmworker, the attorney, the teachers, we are all important.
Y necesitamos todos vivir mejor y tener rentas que podamos pagar todos.
And we need to live better and have more affordable rents that we can all pay.
Y pienso que lo que se está viviendo en el mundo de la guerra en otros países y pienso que es momento de que aquí hagan algo, en hacer algo por todas las personas.
And, you know, with the world that we live in, with wars going on in other countries, I think it's time to do something here for the people.
Pienso que el COVID no fue tan suficiente para poder entender cómo estamos viviendo.
I don't think COVID was really enough, like it wasn't enough to make other people realize how we were actually living.
Y yo me siento triste realmente por lo que pasa en el mundo y lo que pasa en mi comunidad de Jamón Bay.
So I honestly feel really sad with what happens in the world and in my community here in Half Moon Bay.
Porque como lo sigo diciendo, con nuestro sueldo nosotros no alcanzamos a pagar nuestra renta y tenemos que buscar dos o tres trabajos.
So like I said, you know, with our salary, we don't have enough to pay our rents and we have to find like two or three jobs.
Y les agradezco por haberme escuchado a todos.
So thank you all for listening.
Y solo quiero que piensen que solo somos un mundo y un solo corazón, que todos podemos vivir bien en Jamón Bay y en el mundo entero.
I just want you all to think we are one world, we are one heart, and I think we can all live better in Half Moon Bay.
Y ya lo dijo César Chávez, si todos queremos, sí se puede. Gracias, buenas noches.
And like César Chávez said, you know, yes, we can. Good night and good evening.
Gracias, wanna... We did get one more hand here. Rick Hernandez.
Good evening. I just wasn't planning on speaking during the open forum, but the eloquent words from speakers from ALAS and Spriones pushed me to speak. I am the planning commissioner. I am speaking on my own behalf this evening. And I agree that all of us matter and it's important for us to make a sustainable community. For the people who go to school here with my daughters, the people who work here, the people who serve our food, the people who help us in our homes. It's very important that we take care of our whole community and make our community more sustainable. You know, there are many things that we can do as a community, but we have to be honest and say there's very little government can do right now to help. It's going to take years for us to build new housing as a community. I know there's a plan right now to have sixteen affordable housing units built on city property. That's a plan that's in the works, but it will take years to complete. I would encourage the council to look at things they can do now. There are multiple vacant commercial and individual homes. They're vacant in our community. They're owned by investors who choose not to rent them out. Maybe we can change our tax policies so that we tax people for leaving properties vacant for extended periods of time. And also, they're eyesores in many cases. There's several properties like that on my street. We can also, we recently changed our local coastal program that allows workforce housing to be built. And that workforce housing can be temporary and it's something that can be done now. Right now, we can encourage rocket farms and other agricultural businesses to make temporary housing available. We can encourage and work with the school district to help make teacher housing available. These are things that can be done now and they can be done in the short term and they can help alleviate some of the problems that we have. That's something you can do as a council. You can start taking action now. Not everybody's going to like it. Some people don't want it and they will tell you that. But it is something that this council can do by working with the community and instead of just trying to make government solve all the problems, let's go get our local businesses, our local homeowners, our local commercial real estate owners, and let's make them responsible for helping to address this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. No more public speakers. Okay. Moving on to the city manager updates to council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. We have three short updates, starting with our deputy city manager, Matthew Chinister.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and yes, these are very quick updates on just a couple of important items going on in the community. The first item is, we just wanted to give a quick update on the CARES Community Responder Pilot Program and some really important dates coming up. As a reminder for those who haven't heard about this, we've been working for about a year and a half on public safety and responding to the community's needs. And one of the needs that rose to the top was a different way of responding to individuals in mental health crisis. And our city council directed staff and provided funding to create a pilot program for what's called a community responder program. And this would send a van with an EMT and a trained mental health professional, both of which would have specialized training in crisis intervention and de-escalation techniques and would be bilingual to respond to 911 calls for mental health crisis. And we are very, very excited to be rolling this program out this coming, this month. The pilot program is set to start on March 16th and run through October 15th. It's being funded by our city council funding as well as a generous matching grant from the county of San Mateo and Supervisor Horstley's office, which allows us to go for the full seven months. The program will operate within the city limits, but will also include the Moon Ridge Housing Project just outside of city limits. And we're grateful for the sheriff and the county for working with us to allow that expansion outside of the city limits. To access these services, individuals will need to call 911 and the dispatchers at Public Safety Communications will assess the situation to determine if it's an appropriate call for the CARES team to respond to. We will be holding a ribbon-cutting event for this really special program on Wednesday, March 16th. It'll be from noon to 2:00 p.m. and it'll be held at 225 Cabrillo Highway South. That's the Shoreline Station Business Center at the intersection of Highway 1 and Kelly. It'll be on the front side facing Highway 1 at the offices of El Centro de Libertad, who is our contractor that'll be managing the program. We're really excited about this event, but more excited about this great program. We're continuing to seek additional grant funding to expand and extend the program beyond the pilot and we hope individuals will find out about it and share this information with others and let our community know that this program will be available. For more information, you can go to our website, hmbcity.com/careers. We'll have a banner up on the website soon to make it really easy to find that page and we'll continue to add content to it so you can learn more about this great program and service to the community. The second thing I wanted to announce is our upcoming city council priority setting and listening sessions for 2022. This will inform the budget process for fiscal year 2022, '23, which we do on an annual basis. As we've done in previous years, we'll hold listening sessions with the community to gather feedback and input on what's important and what the city should be focusing its energy and resources on. And those will then be followed up by council, city council priority setting session. We're excited about where things are going with COVID, but in an abundance of caution, we're going to do one more year of virtual meetings. They were actually very effective. We had really high attendance the last year doing the virtual sessions and we hope that we'll get the same kind of attendance this year. The first session will be on Wednesday, March 9th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The second session will be on Sunday, March 13th from 3:00 to 5:00. Individuals don't need to attend both. They're just open forums. So if people have things they want to share, they can attend one or both. Both obviously will have Spanish interpretation available and we'll take copious notes and those notes will help inform the council priority setting session, which will be on Tuesday, March 22nd from noon to 3:00 p.m. For those that can't attend a listening session or the priority setting session, there will be an opportunity to fill out an online survey and we're also working on providing paper surveys that can be received at city facilities and our local partners, nonprofit service providers. If you go to hmbcity.com/listeningsessions, you can find more information there. Thank you. Next item is Jessica to talk about redistricting.
Thanks, Matthew. Next slide, please. I wanted to provide an update to the council and community on the outreach that we've done since the, following the council's direction at the February 15th meeting. So Monday, a mailer was sent out to all households affected by deferrals, which includes three neighborhoods, the entire Quinotico neighborhood, the Alceis-Lorain portions of the Alceis-Lorain neighborhood, and then also a portion of downtown around Bloom Lane. And so a package was mailed out on Monday to all of those residents. So if you do live in those areas, please keep an eye on your mailbox. Should be arriving any day now. Today, a special e-news went out to all of our contact lists announcing the March 15th meeting and explaining where we are in the process and inviting people to participate either by sending in comments or joining us at that meeting to participate in the public hearing. There will be ads in the review over the next two weeks. KHMB Radio will also be running some ads and Coastide Buzz is doing some buzz on the process as well in the meeting. And of course, we will have our social media channel advertisements as well. We've added a banner to our website. So if anyone goes to our website, they can get to our updated redistricting page easily. And we do have FAQs on there that include a lot of the answers to questions that we've heard over the past few meetings. Next slide, please. And then for everyone attending on this meeting, if you are interested in this process and you do want to participate, feel free to send me any comments prior to the meeting on the 15th and also attend if you'd like to participate in the public hearing and provide comments during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Well, that's it for the updates. So we're moving on to the consent calendar. Are there items that council members wish to pull?
Yes, please. Go ahead, Harvey. I'd like to pull item 1D, please.
1D. Anybody else?
Yes, I'd like to pull item 1C.
1C, okay. Now, there was a question raised by a person during public forum, Mr. Ullam, wants to discuss the Main Street Bridge, so I'm going to pull that. And I'm going to suggest we consider all three of these at the end of the meeting. The big issue we have before us is the discussion of the public safety survey results. I'd like to recommend that we go ahead and hear that and move the pulled items to the end of the regular agenda. And do I need a motion to do that?
Yeah, I would suggest going ahead and doing a motion to, since you have approved the agenda. I think our typical council is typically considered the pulled items right after the consent calendar. So I would suggest a motion, just for clarity.
And the reason I'm suggesting moving them toward the end of the agenda is because I envision, you know, some robust discussion on at least a couple of those. And I don't want to, you know, abridge those discussions. On the other hand, you know, we do have regular, at least one regular item that is of great interest to the community. So I would entertain a motion to move those three items to the back of the regular agenda.
I move that we move items 1C, 1D, and what is the third item?
1E.
1E to the end of the meeting. And that we accept the rest of the consent agenda.
Second.
Councilmember... Sorry.
Councilmember, sorry. Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rabet?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Mayor Reddick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you for your consideration. We have no ordinances or public hearings this evening, so we're moving to item three, which is resolution.
I'm sorry, Mayor Reddick, do we need to first approve the rest of the consent items that we're not pulling?
The vice mayor's motion included consideration of the non-pulled items.
So that's it. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 3A, Public Safety Community Survey Results.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Happy to be here on this item. We think there's great information to be heard here tonight and that this will be the start of an important discussion in our community. I have with us, joining us tonight, Adam Probowlski from Probowlski Research, who we contracted to perform this survey. And he will be presenting the preliminary results that were received. Just a little bit of background before we turn the time over to Mr. Probowlski. Most folks know that going back to the summer of 2022, our city's done a lot of work around law enforcement and public safety. We've convened a public safety subcommittee that's included several of our council members. And we've also convened many, many public meetings and work groups to talk about public safety and gather feedback from, especially from vulnerable members of our community and to understand their concerns, their fears, and how we can help this community be a safer and healthier place for everybody. One of the things that this council asked us to do was to go out and gather additional feedback from a broader portion of our community. And that was the purpose for which we hired Probowlski Research to do the public safety survey. As you'll hear tonight, the survey was focused on public safety and law enforcement, but it was broader than that. There are questions just about the city and, and some other items that were of importance to us. And so these survey results serve multiple purposes for us and we're grateful to have this information. The survey took place in our community. And I'll just remind folks, this, this survey was only within, for residents within Half Moon Bay. It didn't go beyond our city limits into the unincorporated parts of the coast. And it was conducted via phone and text and email during the first couple of weeks of February. And we're grateful to have the results. And at this time, I'd like to turn the time over to Adam Probowlski from Probowlski Research to share a presentation on these preliminary results. Once we complete this meeting, they'll finalize the report and we will publish the report. We'll make sure it's available to everybody in the community. And then we, we do expect that we'll hold future meetings to talk about the results once everyone has had a chance to review and digest the information. Likely, we will start with a public safety subcommittee in the next month or so. And with that, I'll turn the time over to Mr. Probowlski.
Thank you, Matthew. Mayor, council members, appreciate the opportunity to present our findings. Can everyone see the presentation well? Is it big enough? All right. I'm going to get right into it. We have a lot of material to cover. And so I'm going to be succinct, but try to get it all in. And certainly, if there's something critically pressing, please interrupt me, but I'll have all the time you need for questions at the end and, and for follow-up afterwards. So as Matthew explained, here's kind of the, the big picture of how the survey was conducted. We called people on their landlines and mostly their mobile phones when it came to phones. And we also emailed and texted residents. This was among all residents, a statistically valid survey. We offered the survey in English, Chinese, and Spanish. So if we kind of note down here that 8% of the residents chose English, chose Spanish, and 1% of your residents chose to take the survey in Chinese, it doesn't mean they only speak Spanish. It doesn't mean the English speakers only speak English. It means that's their preference when taking a survey. And 300, just to give you some perspective, you know, statewide, your typical survey might have 900 or 1,000 respondents. So 300 in a community like Half Moon Bay is quite robust. Very, very predictive of, of your community as a whole. I'm going to get right into some of the key things. We had an open-ended question asking what issues were on people's mind? What was of their biggest concern? Traffic and transportation, followed by coronavirus, schools, and then it kind of cascaded down from there. A couple of things to note. This is, these are open-ended responses. So the actual words that people used, along with their kind of situation, their, their ethnicity, their, their language response, their, their gender, their age group will be overlaid in the final reporting that we deliver. So you'll get a sense of what people's concerns are and really where, where their, their experience in life is. One key thing to note is we don't see something in the 40, 50, 6% range. There isn't some, you know, I guess we could say OMG moment here. There, there's nothing that is pervasive that really comes to mind for people. Certainly, traffic is something you're going to address, but all these other things are on people's minds in general. So we asked the question, are you going in the right direction or the wrong direction as a community? And you were headed in the right direction. And I will explain it this way. First, I'll say this is not an academic exercise. So as you see numbers as we go through this and you think, oh, this is an F. It's not the way this world works. We're Americans, we don't agree on anything. And so when you have a plurality that does, we're in a pretty strong position. I will also say that you are different than your other, let's say, similarly situated communities throughout California, other coastal communities throughout California. You are headed in the right direction according to your residents. You are different. Most of your kind of similarly situated communities say they're headed in the wrong direction. We never dismiss the third, one-third almost that say that you're going in the wrong direction. And I'll, I'll address now and I'll probably reiterate it later on. Those who say they are unsure through this survey, it's not them kind of just clicking through the survey. It's them not having any particular experience to be able to give you an answer. You've probably heard, you know, people talk about, you know, school and soccer and church and, and, you know, going out for dinner once a month. That's where their focus is. It's not necessarily on the city and it's just not a part of their experience. And I know in the building, so to speak, it's what you're all focused on, but really the rest of the residents don't necessarily have some perception of it. I'm going to go through the demographic slides here for the first question, just so you get a sense of reading it. I'm going to skip largely through them because they're not necessarily critically important to go through at the moment, but I'll highlight some as we go through. And absolutely, we can discuss them as we go along. We look at the data by gender, including the opportunity to classify themselves as something other than male and female, whether they identify as LGBTQ or not, by age category and by ethnicity. And these are self-reported here, ethnicity. All of this is self-reported. We also look at how long have they been a resident of the city? And then their income level, whether they have children in their home, and then their income level. So really look at the data by all different kinds of categories to understand the experience of the people we're looking at. I will say this, for instance, and you'll see at the end, we have a very small number of Black or African-American residents in the city. So these numbers are going to be very, can be very skewed by one or two people responding because it's a very small number. It's just the reality of being representative of your community. So we also look at the data by language preferred, by what they chose to respond in. And then the mode, so by phone or online. And then even further, whether they responded by landline or mobile and by text, by how they were onboarded to the survey experience, by text or email. To really get a clear flavor of maybe a few little differences here, you know, by, by how people might have responded by landline or mobile phone, just some, some unique, sometimes little pops of differences. We do want to know why it is people feel like the things are going in the wrong direction. We asked this, 32% of the people said wrong direction. What is it that you're concerned about? And we have this traffic and traffic congestion pop up again. So we see that as a theme. And then there are some knocks on, on your governance, sorry. These are open-ended responses of words that they're saying. And I think it can be very informative in understanding the words they say and the concerns they have. We typically call this homework. There are some things in here that you can actually address partly by just clarifying data, by making sure they understand the facts or by actually taking action. And so I think you'll find the open-ended responses to be even more telling than just the categorizations. So the job of the, of the city council, 42% say good. We do not put a value judgment on fair. The truth is, we don't have very high expectations of government today. So if you're doing okay, which is basically what fair is, then it's all good. So you're, you're putting these two together if you want to, and it's, you're doing great. 24% say poor, don't want to dismiss them, always want to be responsive. It's important to understand that. I will show you this slide, and again, I'll skip it if it comes up again. 2.4% say you're doing an excellent job. The rest, you know, well into the 90s, say you're doing a good job. Of this small percentage, the 24% who say you're doing a poor job, a third say very poor and just a two-thirds say poor. So just to give you a perspective of the intensity of those responses. I'm going to move through the open ends, pretty, the demographics quickly. Here, we give a specific list of policy areas of things that you might want to prioritize and ask the residents to prioritize them. And again, we see reducing traffic congestion. So this is, you know, clearly at 76%, it is, you know, an OMG moment. It is a place where action is really compelled. The public is saying, this is what we want action on. So, you know, the recommendation of the consultant is whatever incremental things you do, talk about them, promote them, tell the world about the improvements you're making to fix the traffic congestion. Homelessness is a theme that we see all throughout the state. And, you know, I have a lot of commentary on homelessness and the research we've done. But in general, it's they want action, not, they may or may not be compassionate in their action desires. They just want action. And you can see what's kind of cool is they were able to choose more than one. It cascades down, but you have this real, you know, you know, in statistical terms, clumping of, of, of policy areas that really you can focus on and get, be responsive to the public. There's all these things that are, are relevant. And to the extent that you have things you're already doing that you can be talking about, it would probably be helpful to explain that you're, you're taking action on these items. So we get into now the, the meat of the, the survey about the sheriff's deputies. So throughout the survey, we use some of the same language. In this case, we explain the, the, the dynamic of the sheriff's office serving the city. And we ask them whether they agree or disagree with a whole host of statements. In this case, do they, do they, they serve the, the city and treat residents fairly? 73% agree that they do. 10% disagree and, and a whole bunch, you know, say they just have no context for the question. So again, not an academic exercise. 73% is a strong number. And obviously, there's concern over the 10% that you want to definitely address. We do look at the numbers again by the demographics and nothing particularly stands out except, and just to look at it, just, just in case we thought there might be some differences. You know, there are some, let's say a greater percentage of Latino and Hispanic respondents that say that they, that deputies treat the community fairly. So that is kind of interesting to see, more so than any of the other ethnicities that, that, that self-report. So similarly to the, the small number of Black African-American respondents are bigger than white and, and Asian responses. So interesting to see. Looking at the question of whether deputies that serve Happen Bay are respectful to residents. So we, we have nuanced differences in these questions. And I think each of them stands on its own, is very important to be able to answer. 80% believe that the deputies are respectful to residents. Smaller number disagree. So, you know, these are the kinds of things that, I'll say this. If we do this survey again in a year or two or three, at whatever interval you might consider doing it again, this is the kind of thing where we typically like to see kind of an uptick, a higher number in future surveys improvement. You will have a challenge in having improvement in some of these numbers because they're so high already. So again, I will go through the, the demographics and just point out that in this case Latinos also have a higher percentage of belief that deputies are respectful to residents. And then going to responsive to the concerns of residents. So kind of different, right? There's concerns that we have as residents. Are the deputies focused on those areas? 75% say they agree, only 12% who disagree. One of the other things that we, ways we look at this data is the delta. Is there a big delta between these two numbers? And clearly there is, very large delta. So again, we have a theme of Latinos feeling like they're, just feel a little bit better about law enforcement than the rest of the community. Looking at whether they are friendly and approachable. And, you know, I imagine that some law enforcement officers might say, you know, it's not my job to be friendly and approachable. But in this case, 80% of your public believes that they are. And just 10% say they disagree. I'm going to move through the demographics and hit to, do I trust the San Bernardino County or San Mateo County Sheriff's deputies that serve Happen Bay? 84% say they trust them. So this is a, this is an interesting question because when we, we look at trust in institutions and trust in government, we, we tend to see, especially over the last several years, a diminished amount of trust placed in institutions and government, and especially in law enforcement. And this number is clearly very strong at 84%. Again, very hard to improve on those numbers over time. And if you look demographically, some different groups, younger folk believe dramatically more so, or a bit more so than older residents. And again, you've got standouts here among the Latino community, saying that it's much more trusting of deputies. So are Happen Bay deputies that serve Happen Bay, are they effective at proactively preventing crime? So kind of a different, a different take on law enforcement. And, and again, you know, not something that everybody kind of had context, context for. 18% say, I don't know, because it's just not a part of my experience. I don't know if they're really proactively preventing crime. 63% say yes, and 19% will round up, say no. So if there's a place so far that we've looked for that we could find, maybe find improvement, this might be one of those places. But still, big delta, you know, four to one, or sorry, three to one, agree over disagree. So in this case, specifically me, I have problems that are concern me. Are the deputies addressing those problems that concern me? 68% say they agree, just 16% say they disagree. So again, not one of those wild, you know, 80, 90% numbers, but really, really strong majorities, more than two-thirds agreeing with this statement and, and some opportunity to, to address the concerns about 16% of the population. So in general, do you trust law enforcement officers will protect you and your family? So this is kind of a little bit of a, a bigger picture, not necessarily specifically about the deputies and, but probably in the context of what we're talking about. But in general, do you believe that law enforcement's there and they're going to protect you? 80% say yes, just 11% say no. So really strong numbers in this generalized trust of law enforcement in the process of making sure that I'm protected. And again, just looking at it, big, big numbers among Latino responses. Do you trust the San Mateo County Sheriff's deputies that serve Happen Bay will protect you and your family? So specifically sheriff deputies specifically serving Happen Bay, 77 or 78%. So if you just click back for a second, 80% broadly and 78% within the town. So, you know, a little bit off from that, that, that kind of bigger picture number, but still very strong numbers. And then thinking about the presence, the presence and visibility of the deputies. Is there too much, too little, just about right? You've got 3% say there's too much visibility. 59% say just about right and 30% just say, say too little. So you do, so right here, you've got well over 60% that say you're in a good place or, or maybe you can tone it down a bit. And then you do have, you know, less than a third who say too little, you could improve. So this is, you know, if it was purely based upon majority, you know, you're doing just fine. You may decide that you want to address and change some of these numbers at some point. But you can look and see the experience of the individuals. If there, is there any group that stands out that says they want, you know, particularly more? Well, you can see you've got maybe some, you know, white respondents or some folks who put themselves in another ethnic category. or some folks who put themselves in another ethnic category, say more. And then folks who make lower income, again, small numbers in that category. So the engagement with the community, is there too much, too little, or just about right? The idea that they actually, you know, engage and have contact. A majority says just about right, and also you kind of a similar theme, about thirty-three percent, a little bit more than the last one, say too little. So an opportunity perhaps, if you wanted to improve that engagement, to make that happen. I'm going to, in the interest of time, I'm going to try to move some quickly here. Have you had contact with a deputy in the last twelve months? So thirty-five percent said yes, so a majority said no, sixty-four percent said no. But thirty-five percent said yes, and we break them down in different groups here. Just in general, in the community, I talked to them. There were approachers stopped at four percent, and, or they approached or stopped them. They were approached or stopped, or they called nine-one-one. So small numbers there with some sort of a kind of direct contact. But you've got, you know, this group who kind of just generally feels like they had some interaction. So among those folk, this four percent who feel that they were, who was approached or stopped by a deputy, two-thirds say they agree that they were sufficiently explained why they were stopped. And a third said no. So again, really small numbers here of this kind of people who were actually, you know, stopped by a deputy. But the vast majority say they felt like they had a good explanation, a third not. And then, and then I'm going to kind of move through here real quick and show that, you know, again, small numbers, but you can see some differences. This fifty to sixty-four category didn't feel like they were, had a great explanation. And obviously, there's different demographics who are missing because they just weren't a part of that factor. Half the Latino residents who had said they were stopped didn't feel like they got a good explanation. All right, so again, the, among this four percent, were, please indicate the words, the following words you'd use to describe the interaction. So among that group, fifty-eight percent say they were professional, fifty percent say they were friendly, and a third said they were hostile. Obviously, this is a number you'd want to improve, understand better. But again, I classify, I can't, you may explain that this is a very small percentage, very small numbers of your residents, not acceptable, not okay, but small numbers. And then we did have two respondents, again, kind of small numbers, but just explaining in this category here. We asked, is there anything you want to share about the last time you were stopped by deputies? And among that small group, there was two people among this four percent, so I can make sure you understand the magnitude, said that they were racially profiled, or there was some issue with racial profiling. Some concern there. This person said, or these couple people said, I deserved the ticket. Officer was friendly, things like that. Obviously, some concern here among that very small group, and something that can be certainly addressed. So how would you characterize how you feel when you see or interact with a deputy that serves Half Moon Bay? So here, we kind of asked them from a stress standpoint. Two percent say they have a high stress level, and it cascades down. The vast majority said they have no stress or low stress. I think we can all kind of put ourselves in that moment of being pulled over by a police officer and kind of understand what that might be. But I don't know that we can all put ourselves in the position of having high stress, maybe, you know, for a certain demographic, a certain group of the community that really experienced it differently than some of us. And so something that I think certainly should be addressed, or could be addressed. Have you or a household member been a victim of a crime? Seventy-nine percent say no. And you can kind of see perhaps that there's some differences in demographics of who has experienced a crime. Has a member of your household reported a crime? So a little different, seventy-one percent say no, but you do have twenty-two percent that said yes. So they've actually actively called something in. And then, so do you feel safe first in your home? Ninety-five percent say yes. This is, you know, what we call puppies and kittens territory, right? We're really not going to get much more than this, really high, high numbers. And then we look at the numbers by, in your neighborhood during the day. Again, ninety-five percent feel safe during their neighborhood, in their neighborhood during the day. In your neighborhood after dark, okay, numbers come off a little bit, eighty-one percent, but very strong numbers. And then in a commercial area during the day, ninety-three percent safe. And in a commercial area at night, or after dark, seventy-one percent. So little nuances there. I don't know if that's a, something that needs to be addressed, but changes in numbers. Beaches, trails during the day, ninety-one percent, they feel safe. And then beaches and trails after dark, that kind of cuts it in half, down to fifty-four percent. Thirty percent feels, say they feel unsafe. I suspect, you know, some of those are closed at some point, so maybe one of the reasons why. And then we get the chance for residents to prioritize the kind of different types of things that law enforcement might be working on, and how they can kind of help prioritize those things. The number one concern they care about is property crimes. And that's where they want that, those resources to be focused. After that, speeding, traffic issues, and then gang activity and things that come down. There is, you know, a strong, some strong numbers there at the top, each of which, you know, I highly recommend be addressed in some capacity. Again, kind of a homework list here, and an opportunity to be responsive. And also, I suspect that your sheriff deputies are going to want to look at these things and figure out ways to make improvements. So we explain the programming that the city is doing to try to make improvements in law enforcement in the community. And we kind of give this, you know, pretty factual explanation of the programs you're implementing. A third believe, or thirty percent believe that after the programs are implemented, there will be, first of all, we asked, did you know about the programs? Thirty percent said yes, two-thirds almost said no. So you've got a real opportunity to educate your community in a much bigger way about the programming you have in place to make improvements to law enforcement and trust between law enforcement and transparency in law enforcement. And you can kind of see what's kind of cool is you know who to target. You know who doesn't know, and you know who does know. And there's no real demographic here that majority-wise knows about your programming. So you can kind of do that broad outreach as big as you want because you really don't have majorities in any particular demographic that know about it. And then we ask, when fully implemented, do these programs, do they make Half Moon Bay a safer place? A majority says yes. So we gave them a very brief understanding, because they really didn't have context before, of what your programming is. And once they're fully implemented, fifty-four percent say yes, it's going to be a safer place. Still a big group just don't know, they don't have context yet, and seventeen percent say no. Strong place to have start with a majority, but really a big opportunity to grow. Any suggestions for how the sheriff deputies serve Half Moon Bay can improve their services? A majority says no, there's nothing particular that comes to mind. And, but we do give them opportunity to say all the things they want to say. Again, open-ended response, an opportunity for you to read their words, more visibility, more police. You know, a group here just says, you know, thumbs up, keep doing good work, and some other things that you might want to address. Again, small numbers for some of these items, but none, none should be dismissed. We did have another topic we addressed, and it was the prospect of a new revenue measure in town. And you have a plurality that said they would support it. This is a fee, a tax that would go towards reducing homelessness. And the opportunity to have, in addition to the tax audits and citizen oversight and all the typical things that you go along with that kind of a tax that would be on non-owner occupied second homes, you have a plurality support. And this was specifically asked only among voters. And, you know, the vast majority of your residents are voters, but we're surveying all residents. So some of them were not. And so in this case, you have a sense that you have a starting point potentially, if a policy like this were to be introduced, you have more people saying yes than no. But some work to be done to educate on the value and the prospect of what can be done with those resources. Here's your demographics of how long people have lived in town. Most people for a very long time. Here's the demographics, you have about, less than a third who have children in their home. You have thirty-five percent who say they're Latino or Hispanic. And then you kind of see the smaller numbers for these other demographics in your community. These is your age distribution, you're a little bit older of a community compared to some others. Here's your income distribution, you know, plurality is in the higher income categories. And of course, more women than men. And you also have just two percent who self-identified as LGBTQ. But you also had a sizable number who said they prefer not to answer. So there's a good chance that they could have been put in this category, but just weren't comfortable explaining that. And then here's the big picture of your demographics. You can kind of see the large majority chose English as their response, and a pretty good distribution of phone versus online. Two-thirds were online, one-third phone, and here's how it all goes. I know that was a ton of information. As someone who does this in, you know, hundreds of communities a year, you're in a very strong position, and you have a very clear picture of some great things you can do to expand your opportunity to speak to people and promote the good things you do. You're in a strong position community-wise. Happy to take questions, or, you know, a couple of things just to point out. We're, customized reporting is always available, other briefings are always available. We're at the disposal of Matthew and your whole staff as needed.
Thank you, Adam, and really appreciate all the effort that went into this and this great presentation. Before we turn the time back over to the council, I just, I do want to share, you know, this information is really important. I think it is representative of how our community as a whole feels. But we just want to remind folks, we've done a lot of work and outreach in the community as well among specific populations and on specific topics. And I think we have to take the collective information we've gathered, what we've heard from, from our focus groups, what we've heard from our listening sessions, and what we see here in developing our policy decisions. Not one piece of this, I think, holds a heavier weight. They're all important as we make these important policy decisions. But we're grateful to have this great information to help inform decisions going forward. And with that, we'll turn the time back over to the council for any clarifying questions.
Council members, go for it. I know, I certainly want time to dig through the results. I want to look more closely at how responses broke down according to language preference. And I'd also like to see the answers to the open-ended questions. And the council's going to get that. So we may want to, you know, re-agendize this at some point when we've had a chance to digest the information and ask more questions. But those are kind of the things that, you know, that I'll be looking for. I noticed that we have one raised hand from the public. Actually, we have a couple. Jessica would be like to allow the public to comment.
Sure, our first speaker is John Ollum.
Thank you, Ms. Blair. I guess I was a bit surprised to see some of the results on the survey. Wasn't surprised to see people were willing to tax other people for something that they get. I would expect to see that. The problem is, is you didn't really learn anything. Because everybody, from what you could tell from this survey, is it's great. I mean, everybody likes the cops, and I myself, all the answers comported with my answers. The questions you didn't ask were about how people would feel about calling the police if there was a mental health crisis in their household. Now, in this city, two people have died when the police showed up when there was a mental health crisis. Both times, the police basically forced confrontations when they didn't need to. And without, in ways that left them vulnerable, and put them, in the end, they ended up in a position where they had to kill somebody. And if you look at the facts, the bare facts, you would say that they were justified. But the questions that you didn't ask are, you know, about what happened to Trinoto Okabe, who just was just a confused individual and crossed the street over in San, on the other side of our hill. And he crossed, he jaywalked a couple of times. And he was paranoid about the police, he was a large black man. He didn't stop. They weren't looking for desperadoes, they weren't looking for shoplifters, they weren't looking for anybody. All they saw was a shop, a jaywalker. And fifteen minutes after his encounter started, he was a dead man. And we have Sandra Harmon, right in your own streets. She was obviously a disturbed person. The police knew they were looking for somebody who was carrying a gun and a bottle of wine and talking smack about race wars. Yet she ended up dead after an officer knocked on her door and put himself in a horrible position, didn't have backup, turned off his camera. The video is missing. The woman was shot in the back three times, dead, three fatal shots in her back. Not one of you has expressed any concern about that. Not one of you has gone on records asking how that happened. The deputy district attorney came to you and told you a story that totally contradicted what his own deputy had testified to. And no one pointed it out, and no one backed up, and the video is missing. And they won't supply the proof that exists that the video doesn't exist. And you won't back up any efforts to hold the police to account for this horrible mistakes they made in strategy and implementation and holding people accountable. And when the most critical tape that should ever have existed in Half Moon Bay doesn't exist, and you haven't followed up on it. And the only people that are trying to follow up on it are people who got, whose parents got shot. And you know a judge has come forth and agreed that this has come to that. And I'm sorry, I've gone over my limit. So I don't understand why we're doing a survey about something, and we find out everybody's happy, and how this is going to change anything to what happened to Sandra Harmon, or Trinoto Okabe, or to Yonera Serrano, because you didn't even ask that question. Thank you.
Next speaker, Gilbert Ariaga.
Hi, this is actually Gilbert's wife, Dr. Belinda, from the study I did on the record. Because what I want to share is, I'm also a researcher, and I, you know, do research as part of my faculty work at the University of San Francisco. And in addition to working with the Latino community here on the coast, I want to address a couple of questions about this research study. First is like, thinking about how do we account for the cultural elements of fear in your studies, though, or in the, you know, survey? Like, is that something that you even account for? I don't think so, because we know that our community, our Latino community, especially here on the coast, I have many who are, come from mixed status homes, which means there's immigration concerns, status concerns, other concerns that they're thinking about. So their answers have to be also considered in the context of random study being done and phone calls made to them, like, how do they, you know, really, how they respond? Is there a factor of checking this? Also, you know, qualitative studies using testimonial have shown to be really effective with Latino community. So I'm also wondering, from a different perspective, was there a cultural accountability embedded in this other than just Spanish language to be asking the question? And third is that we've had, you know, about, it's been six years since Yonera Serrano unfortunately passed away, which is still heartbreaking. I think we're going on seven. And so seven years till now, we've had testimony after testimony. People have come to city councils, families have come, individuals have come. Before COVID, folks were showing up to city councils, sharing how they felt they were going to listening sessions. Latino communities specifically sharing that they felt that there was racial profiling, that they felt scared to call the police for mental health, that they felt scared in general and not trusting of the police. And now we come to the study that says, as you repeatedly said, Latinos, 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 eighty percent, very satisfied. I would question like how valid or, you know, what is the use of checking validity in this study, considering all the other material that has been presented before this? And I just think that it's really important. And I appreciate what you said, Matthew. Thank you so much about taking these facts into totality. Because as a clinician myself, as a life and clinical social worker, I have met with hundreds of Latino families on the coast side. I've met with youth, I've met with individuals, with moms and dads, who in many different spaces have shared their concerns, their fear, their experiences that have not been positive that we've had to bring to the councils, to the city. And so I would, you know, really want to think about how can we do, if we're going to do another, a survey that we really think about, a culturally sensitive survey that really takes into account other things besides just a quantitative survey? Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn. Next speaker is David Blobby.
Thanks, Jessica. I think that I just, my Zoom just went away. Am I there?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. I just want to touch very quickly on why this survey is completely invalid. And it's very, very simple. The seven questions, beginning with question number six, are leading questions with interconnected statements, which any pollster has to know as a matter of course. A leading question with an interconnected statement combines two closely related statements that put bias into the respondents' answers or their head, and then they answer accordingly. Examples of this would be, many employees dislike wearing masks to work. How do you feel about this? Most students think virtual learning sucks. Do you agree? And now I can give you from the actual survey itself. The San Mateo County Sheriff's Department deputies that serve Half Moon Bay treat residents fairly. That artificially influences people to answer in the affirmative that they agree with it. This survey is completely bogus. And I can't believe that, you know, I can't believe it. But if you make public policy based on this survey, you're making a gross error at the cost of our residents who are most at risk. And I think that that would be a tremendous shame. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes public comments. Oh, we have one more. Tony Serrano?
Thank you, Jessica. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I just want to support what Belinda, Dr. Belinda had said about this results of the survey. I think they're not representative of the Latino community. We have, you know, the Latino Advisory Board has met with several families to learn more about their experiences in the coast. And I'm just shocked to learn, you know, the numbers about, you know, trusting the police and things like that. And I do want to think that, you know, the city of Half Moon Bay is moving in the right direction with everything that we have done to, you know, build that trust again. But I still think that, you know, you have to take the element of fear, of retaliation of the families. Sometimes, you know, you're asked a question and you think, am I going to get punished if I say no? Is this going to affect my status? You know, I better say yes. And, you know, also, another question I had, it was about, you know, whether the survey, you can check a box and say, I'm Latino. But, you know, who knows if a Latino actually responded that survey? And then lastly, I want to make a comment on the program, Yanira Serrano Presente. You know, I think we are moving in the right direction with that. But, you know, as you notice, the large community is not aware of the program. So I guess we have to, you know, publicize the program and let people know that, you know, there's options out there when calling law enforcement. And I think that's all I have. You know, I just, I'm just shocked to see the responses of the public because it's not representative of what we have seen and what we have feel, you know, when we met with the families. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Tony. Rick Hernandez?
Hi, my name is Rick Hernandez. I am a planning commissioner, I'm speaking on my own behalf. Interesting results. I think Mr. Olem, I would agree with a lot of what he said in that we didn't learn a great deal. We've known for many years that traffic is terrible. Most people like the cops, we'd like to see the police patrol a little bit more. I do think it merits a response in terms of the construction of the poll. We do in fact have a pollster here who does these types of polls. And I think it would be helpful and useful for all of us to hear their response. I know that my company does surveys every two weeks and we do ask a lot of nested questions purposefully because it helps build context. But I think it is important, to Mr. Blobby's point, to determine if, you know, is there bias in the construct of the survey? And, you know, every survey has some form of bias. And so what is it and what are we looking at? I also think it's important to recognize that the Latino community in Half Moon Bay is not some single monolithic thing. I am a Latino. You know, Spanish language was the first language my dad spoke. I grew up in a mixed immigrant status household. And, you know, my experience in Half Moon Bay is very different from other people's experiences of Hispanic or Latino in Half Moon Bay. And so I do think it's important to dig into those cultural differences and the sub-communities. I do think it's really important to look at the people who responded in Spanish as a starting point. And I think the point that Dr. Belinda was making about, you know, looking at qualitative research, you know, is very important for assessing out feedback for the types of questions that Mr. Olem mentioned. You know, we need to look at, you know, the mental health issues, how safe people feel. You know, and I do think it merits maybe digging into that a little bit deeper. But overall, you know, not a lot of surprises here. I know I grew up in a crime-infested neighborhood and I would have told you I wanted to see more police in my neighborhood. So, and I like the presence I see on my street, which I see the police every day, driving up and down. Would love to see more of them on the beach, patrolling on horseback or in their little ATVs. But, you know, I think we need to look at the data a little more carefully. And as Deputy City Manager Matt Chittister said, this is part of an overall picture of how we build a complete view of what's going on in our city. So I think some good work's been done, but there's more to do. Thank you.
Thanks, Derek. That concludes public comments.
Any questions or comments from council members? Council member Rarback?
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Penrose and Councilmember Brownstone and Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, we're all on board. I agree with Matthew that it's very important that we don't let this one survey dominate public policy. When, one of the interesting numbers to me that I was struck with was that, you know, four percent of the population of the survey respondents had been detained by law enforcement. That's 12 people. And half of those apparently had negative interactions. So it's small numbers of people that make a big difference in our safety. And as John Olem pointed out, two members of the coast side have been killed, in my opinion, in an irresponsible way by law enforcement. So those public policy questions are, need to be considered. Belinda Ariaga and Tony Serrano are very responsible members of our Latino community. They have personal, direct interactions with members of their community who are very afraid, in many cases, of law enforcement. And that did not come across in this survey. So if we're going to make sensible public policy, we have to consider other issues that, where members had direct interactions with people in our community who were affected by law enforcement. So while I appreciate that the survey results were as surprising as I expect, I didn't expect, I think we need to go beyond this survey if we're going to make sensible public policy that really respects the safety of our community. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I would have to agree with everything that Councilmember Rarback said. I also agree with Matthew Chittister's comment that this survey is one part of the information that we are gathering in order to make our community a safer place for all of us, including our Latino population. One of the things that I noticed that I thought was interesting of the percentage of Latinos, and I don't remember the numbers right now, that describe themselves as Hispanic, the majority of them speak English, not Spanish, or choose English as their favorite language. Which means to me that the majority of the Latinos that participated in the survey were not Spanish-speaking. They may not have included immigrants, undocumented people, or people that are going to be unwilling to respond to a survey. So I think that's one thing we can look at to say that the survey was not intentionally skewed, but it did reveal to us who was speaking for the Latino community in this survey. And they may not be representative of the large number of Latino folks who do have issues with policing. So that was the point I wanted to make. And I appreciate the hard work that went into the survey. I know that this firm really attempted to make it unbiased and complete and asked a lot of very good questions. But I do think that that's a built-in problem with it. And so I'm glad that we're not looking at the survey and taking it as the information that we use to decide policy in our city.
Yeah, well, thank you for, Adam, for coming and going through quite a lot of data. We didn't have a lot of time to clarify things as you were going. So I just, I would really be curious to hear some of your responses to a few particular questions and then anything else you heard. I was also wondering about the language piece Deputy Mayor Penrose brought up, that thirty-five percent of participants who identify as Latino, of that group, only eight or nine percent chose to speak in Spanish versus English. So that's one question. But I'm also just generally interested in what you felt accounted, how you felt you dealt with the issues that Belinda Ariaga brought up about cultural differences, cultural sensitivity, and maybe a little bit about the difference between random surveys and people who are self-selected? Because that's always an issue, whether it's quantitative or qualitative. And then who's facilitating a conversation? You know, all these things come up to question or support survey results. And especially one that had, you know, a lot of surprises in terms of the results. I'd be interested in just a little more background about some of this juicy stuff that's come up and really good questions.
Sure, happy to talk about a few of them. First on language, I don't have the numbers in front of us, we can get them. But I'd be willing to bet that not all the people that chose to take the survey in Spanish were necessarily classifying themselves as Latino. I mean, probably the vast majority are. But it's not, they could be mutually exclusive. It doesn't, you don't have to be Latino to speak Spanish and vice versa. So we made the attempt to cast the widest possible net. You know, sometimes when cities do these sort of surveys, they focus on voters. Sometimes, but in this case, we focused on all residents. And our, you know, our net was wide when it came to talking to people in all those different modes. So we believe that it was very representative of the broader community. And I want to be clear, while numbers were big, happy, supportive, positive, there were definitely numbers of people who had serious concerns and very serious, you know, accusations. And those people, as I said all throughout the survey, should never be dismissed. And that work, that information should be pursued with vigor. So there are definitely elements of your community that do not have warm fuzzies about law enforcement and do not feel like things are going in the right direction. And so we can definitely look more at those communities. I also say that, and this is something I've talked to staff about a bit, in order to have a real conversation about these topics, you need that big-picture understanding of what the community as a whole thinks. If then, there is a desire to dive in deeper to any one element of that population, there's all kinds of things that can be done with, you know, consultants that charge a bunch of money or with just staff time and listening sessions and the things, a lot of the things you've already done. So, you know, I agree, this doesn't have to be the end-all. This is just that big-picture perspective of what the community thinks. I'll say this, you know, as researchers, we are always trying to create an unbiased environment or the least, you know, eliminate as much bias as possible and engage the population on a, on a, on a random basis rather than a self-selected basis. And the tools that we have available to us include ensuring that the system that we use is a stratified random sampling. So we know when we start the project, the goals of the people in each of those demographic categories based upon census data, to understand who we want to capture in this survey and make sure in the end, our statistics are largely following that model. And so our job is to capture that picture and do it as randomly as possible. The truth is, as you get beyond a system that was used for, you know, decades, random digit dialing, which really is not such an effective tool anymore, all the other tools that we have available to us, and this is a little bit in the weeds research, that some of the commentators probably appreciate, all the other tools available to us, a piece of mail, a phone, an email, a text message, any of those other things are proxies for randomization. And so we do our best to make it as random as possible and as unbiased as possible. And that's what we did in the survey by casting a very wide net.
Adam, so just to dive into one area specifically, a question that both Belinda and Tony Serrano brought up, of the, you know, thirty-five percent of Latino respondents, how do you? how do you account for the concern that, well, they didn't feel comfortable or safe saying, let's say, anything negative about sheriffs, based on their situation and, you know, concerns and fear? How, when you do a survey like this, can you feel somewhat confident that people are feeling comfortable or honest, et cetera? How do you do that?
So we do a lot of work in immigrant communities in America on topics as sensitive as government benefits. And one of the key factors that we use is, to make it clear, this is a confidential survey, and we find very wide participation among every demographic, documented or not, immigrant or not. We, I guess the way I would explain it is this way, interest in my community is not driven by by, you know, whether I, my status. My status does not determine whether I care about my community, or whether I have an interest in my community, or I have an interest in outcome. And so we find in our research broadly that we do not have a challenge capturing people based on all demographics, including status. It's just not a factor in our ability to collect results. So now, obviously, we specifically did not ask the question about status, because it was staff specifically said, don't, and we tend not to, but we are confident we captured that broad picture. But I'll say again, to the extent, staff kind of points it out, to the extent that you see numbers here that concern you, and they some should, right, any of the negative numbers give you some pause, that's an opportunity for additional discovery, and an opportunity to look back at some, you know, sessions that you've had in person with people and and other things you've heard, there is an element of your population that is concerned about these things, and that should absolutely be addressed. Broadly, though, you have a population that's very happy with the direction.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Thank you. So many things to say. Thank you for all the hard work on the survey. You know, part of this, a lot of things that I do not agree with. It is unfortunate that I work for a nonprofit organization that primarily serves Latino community members. You know, of the three thousand three hundred Latinos in the coast, I probably know about ninety-five percent of them. One of the things that I do, I do engage, you know, with the community. I've seen it, I mean, I'm all over the place, you know, the the relationship, you know, or deputies, sheriffs with the Latino community, with the children especially. Not too long ago, you know, we do a food distribution, you know, to people's homes for several reasons. But, you know, in this case, I was doing a food distribution, you know, south of Hafum Bay, you know, Moon Ridge. There was probably a group of about, I don't know, ten kids aged seven to ten or eleven, you know, playing around the street. They all knew me, they all know who I am, they see me often. As I was, you know, delivering the the food, you know, to deputies, you know, patrol car, you know, drove by. You know, I waved at them, I know the deputies, and I asked them, and I asked them, could you please come and meet, you know, you know, these kids, come, you come say hello to them? The driver who did not know who I was, right away replied, you know, I don't have time right now, we are, we're going somewhere. The passenger knew who I was, you know, he knows who I am. And he said, he replied, yes, we will gladly do it. The kids were actually afraid of the patrol, I know, the deputies. You know, I could tell by them, you know, by the slang they were using, right, by the language they were using towards, you know, by the deputies. And I said to the kids, no, 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 they're friends, you know, they're friendly, they're here to protect you. You know, I want you to to meet them, so when you see them drive by again, you can wave at the deputies, you can say hello to the deputies. So I went to another kid, another another part of the community, you know, saw some kids, you know, I asked them, do deputies ever come out, you know, and say hello to you, or greet you, or, you know, give you stickers? Nothing. So after looking over the, you know, after listening to the survey, I really, I'm interested in knowing, you know, the people that replied to the survey, where were they when Yanira was killed? Where were they when I was criminalized for protecting my family? Where were they when Sandra Harmon was killed? So this survey, I mean, listening to the survey, if I didn't know any better, I mean, I felt like lighting up a fire, you know, pouring some marshmallows and seeing kumbaya. I mean, everything looked perfect, but it's not. So, you know, Matthew is right, I mean, we have a lot of work to do, this is just something that we heard from the community today, but I don't think it represents our community. You already heard from Dr. Belinda, from Tony, and Rick Hernandez, you know, I know you have a Hernandez last name, but when I say Latino, I'm talking about Latinos that care about Latinos issues. Having a Latino last name, you know, doesn't mean you're actually addressing, you know, what goes on in our community, if you really know what's going on, you know, with your neighbors across the across the highway. That's what I said when I said Latinos. There's two things that goes along with this survey that I'm actually worried about. We have a new captain in Hafum Bay. After looking at his interview that was on the Hafum Bay Review, I became concerned with his experience, with his answers, I became concerned. I have the experience of working with law enforcement for fifteen years, until I was criminalized by the own, by the same people that I was working with for protecting my family, for standing up against, you know, the department for killing Yanira. So I have the experience, I know how to read the answers. Now, from your survey compared to the recent data we just got from San Mateo County Sheriff's Department, out of all the men arrested, forty-eight percent are Latino. How was that shown in the survey? You know, we got an email from John, you know, a while back, talking about, we don't need a survey. We have Councilmember Jimenez who lived it, his experience, thirty years in Hafum Bay, Hafum Bay PD, San Mateo County Sheriff's, the harassment, the criminalizing. I mean, I know a lot of stories across my community of a lot of people that have been criminalized, have been harassed, there's been a, you know, profile. Will you hear from a from a deputy saying that racial profiling is not against the law? I mean, I don't know what education he got that from. It is against the law to racial profile. So the answers that we got today do not represent Hafum Bay. The people that we need to hear from, you know, that thirty-three percent are Latinos in Hafum Bay is not represented in the survey. There's a lot of things missing. There's a, there's a step forward, you know, we are moving forward. I'm very happy that our community feels safe, I'm very happy for that. Putting on the same question, putting gangs and drugs, I do not agree with that, there's two different things. We have a drug epidemic in our community that we don't even know what we're dealing with. These are high school kids, not gang members. Just yesterday, somebody was chatting with me, high school kid hanging at a, you know, at a spa, she was, she got to see a kid foaming from her mouth, from the drugs they were using. That is concerning. When, you know, if you don't know what your kids are doing, that is concerning.
Jimenez, could you wrap it up and focus on your remarks on the the survey itself? What you're talking about is very important stuff, but if we can keep focused on the survey itself and asking any questions and commenting about the survey, I'd like to move along.
My apologies, Mayor, you know, but this is something I have to say. You know, it goes right with the with the survey, it is right to the survey. I'm saying it does not represent my community, the community that I know. And to be able to do that, I had to tell you stories about it. Because that's what we have, we have the stories that are not being told. So, no, so that's why I went into detail about the stories that are happening in my community, in what I see, what I read on the paper. Have it right here in front of me, Hafum Bay Review. I read it every time. I'm always checking to make sure my community's safe, it feels safe. And yes, you know, it's work to, there's work to do, and I want to be well-represented across the board. Thank you.
I have a question for Adam. So one of the speakers raised the issue of leading questions. Could you address that? He basically implied that those sorts of things make the survey bogus. Could you explain the use of such questions? I think some other speaker referred to them as nested questions. I'd like to understand that better.
Sure. I disagree. So my, our job is to get an accurate read of what the public is thinking. And sometimes we're asking for an accurate read of what the public's thinking on subjects that are are not totally foreign to them, but not a part of their daily experience, and not something that they regularly think about or engage with. And so that's one of the reasons we use the technique of the types of questions we use of an agree or a disagree with a statement, to give context for something that on a daily basis, I'm just not thinking about, it's just not part of my experience at the moment. And so that's the technique we use with that type of question. We do not expect they are leading, we do not expect they they evoke a specific response, we do expect it gives context and gives people a chance to give an honest answer. And we have, right, clearly, still people who don't have context, so they said they're unsure, and definitely people who disagree with those statements. But as you see, it's a theme, it's not just with those questions, it's throughout the survey, you have a generally positive, generally engaged community, happy with those, with the subject matter, but a very clear delineating line of people who do not.
And how do you interact with foreign language speakers? Like you engage with folks in Chinese and Spanish, do you send texts in Spanish, do you leave voicemail messages in Chinese? How do you interact with the non-English speakers?
So the phone calls are initiated in English. The moment we identify a language barrier or another language spoken, or are specifically requested another language, we switch to that other language. For emails, emails all, you know, subject line is is English, but there's a very clear identifier in that email as an option for the other languages in the email. Text messages are in in English, but we also identify, if available in the database, and sometimes it is, households that specifically, or a specific individual who is, like, for instance, the the voter file does identify people who request other ballots. In that case, we can send, and we do send in that particular language. Consumer files also sometimes identifies a language preference, and we can send in that language as well. But once, and regardless of language as far as outreach, once people get to the survey experience in the online environment, or the telephone environment, talking to our interviewers, the switch is is as easy as they want it to be. They can switch to their preferred language in the online environment very easily, in this case, English or Chinese, if we initiated in, or I'm sorry, Chinese or Spanish, if they initiated in English. And and then in the telephone environment, most of our interviewers are at least bilingual. And if, for instance, let's say, you know, the interviewer doesn't speak Chinese, but it's pretty clear that there's a Chinese language barrier, they will, you know, they know, I don't know enough to be able to say, you know, one minute and and hand them off to a Chinese, a Chinese speaker.
Great, thank you. So I agree with all the speakers who identified the the survey and the survey results as, you know, one tool in our toolbox to understand the public's engagement with public safety. It's one tool in the toolbox. And I don't think we have to accord it, you know, any more significance than that. I think it's it's wrong to eliminate it because it doesn't give you the results you want or the results you expect, or to expect something that's general to apply to particulars, right? This is just giving us a a general feel for it. And we need other other modes to engage people, we need stories, just like Joaquin was talking about. We need listening sessions, and we've done that, and we need to do more, clearly. So I think we just want to keep this in in the context, is we're trying to understand where the public's coming down on the issue of public safety. And we've done a number of things, we've had the listening sessions, you know, we worked with folks to implement the Yanira Presente program, we're kicking off a pilot for the CARES program to use mental health providers to respond in the case of a mental health crisis rather than the sheriff's office. I think that's that's a great move. So I think we just, you know, we need a big toolbox with lots of things in it, and I think we've done a good job with staff at building up that toolbox. So I I appreciate that we have the results, I want to dig deeper into them and understand the language preference issue, but, you know, I'm not going to ignore it or chastigate it or whatever, it's it's something that provides some useful information. And that's all I'm going to say about that. So I appreciate the work that's been done, I think it's useful, I think we need to keep building our comprehensive picture, identify those areas that need work, and work on it. Stories, surveys, listening sessions, whatever it takes. But I think we have to remember that we represent the entire community too. So having something that gauges the response community-wide, I think is an important quiver, arrow in our quiver. That's all I'm going to say, and I think it's time to move on. So I would thank the the pollster, Adam Promoski, for for coming and spending time with us, and the deputy city manager and the city manager for working on the process in the public safety committee and the council. So we might want to, like I said, put this on the agenda again as we we dig down and look at the comments, and I'm happy to facilitate that, so.
And Madam Mayor, maybe I'll, as a way of wrap-up, I'll just reiterate what Matthew said at the beginning, which from here, where do we go from here? So we will talk to Adam tomorrow and see what the turnaround time can be to convert the report from draft to final, it doesn't seem like it's going to be that long. Once that's done, a full copy of the report will be sent to each council member. Once that's done, a, a full copy of the report will be sent to each council member and we will post it on, on our website. So the public can see the full results, including all, all the comments. And then we did have a public safety subcommittee scheduled for next week. Uh, again, we felt that we wanted to make this presentation to the full council. That's one reason that that meeting's canceled. Also, it turns out that that is, is going to be when one of our listening sessions is. But I do think the next opportunity to dive a little deeper before we would bring this back to full council would be to bring it to the public safety subcommittee and maybe the two of you can dive into some of what we heard a little deeper after you have a chance to review it. So that, that would be the steps that we would take, uh, after this meeting tonight.
Yeah, I, I think there's still a lot of conversation to, to be had around this issue. So I think this is, you know, just the beginning. And I think we want to dig deeper into, you know, the public's perception of the, the, the job that the council, city council is doing. You know? But I, I want us to be respectful of, of everyone, to not treat any of us as, you know, a stereotype or a monolith. I think we want to listen to each other and see each other, you know, as our valuable selves and we're all valuable in this community. So, thank you very much. Uh, yes, I, I have a request for a break. Uh, I'd like to take, uh, let's take a, let's see, it's nine eleven. Let's take a five-minute break. Will that work for you, Councilmember Brownstone? You're muted.
That's great. Thanks.
See you in fives.
Thanks, Adam.
Bye, Adam.
Doing well?
Okay, so.
Hi, Andres.
Good to see you.
You too.
I'm reading on Joaquin.
I'm here.
Okay. It's like Joaquin's here now, so I think we can move on to item three B, adoption of the legislative platform.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, tonight's item is to adopt the 2022 legislative platform and receive a brief legislative update on the high profile, some of the high-profile bills that are currently under consideration in the legislature. Uh, the legislative subcommittee comprised of Mayor Riddick and Councilmember Rarback met at the end of January to review last year's platform and make any changes as necessary. And Andres Ramirez from Townsend Public Affairs, who is the city's lobbyist firm, is here to present on both of those items.
Thank you, Jessica. Um, good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, Mr. City Manager and staff. Andres Ramirez with Townsend Public Affairs. I am going to share my screen so everyone can see, um, the legislative platform. And then after that, everyone will be able to see the, um, bill matrix. So there we are, present mode. Is that visible?
Can you make it a little larger? There you go.
Alrighty. So I first want to provide a little bit of context, uh, very lightly, um, on the legislative platform. As many of you know, uh, we are in the second year of a two-year legislative session. Um, with that means we are dealing with a lot of pieces of legislation coming out of the Senate and Assembly here in Sacramento. So in this second year alone, so since January, there have been over twenty-one hundred new bills introduced. And then on top of that, we have a multitude of two-year bills that we still have to analyze that are in play and alive. Uh, and in addition to that, um, there are a number of spot bills or intent bills which are out. But they still do not have substance in them. So we will not actually know the full scope of everything that is out there in the legislative universe that may or may not affect the city of Half Moon Bay. What we do know is that on March fourteenth and March sixteenth respectively, the Assembly and Senate must have in to Legislative Council their amendments to all intent bills or spot bills. So essentially one week after that, so roughly three weeks from now, we will have a better or I should say, full understanding of everything that is out there in the legislative universe. So how that plays into, you know, our legislative platform, we developed this legislative platform to help us stay focused um, on what is really relevant and most important to the city of Half Moon Bay. So much of, you know, what is in this year's legislative platform is very similar to last year's legislative platform with a couple of caveats. Um, and then, so I will scroll down so you can see them. Are you all able to see?
No.
Oh, that's strange.
That's too big.
Yeah.
Too big.
Let's do this. Okay, there we go. So scrolling down, I will go to seventy-five percent. There. So climate resiliency, one of the tenants of our legislative platform, um, again, on there in 2022. However, you can see denoted in blue, based on my conversation and robust discussions with the legislative subcommittee, we have added two items. One being advocating for legislation that bolsters decarbonization efforts, including any sort of tax credits for green development and then an overall increased focus on electrification for critical infrastructure. Uh, these are all things that, you know, also align with the appetite overall of the state legislature. So we figured it was important to put on there. Additionally, supporting the efforts of the San Mateo County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District. So those are the two new additions to our climate resiliency pot. Once again, we have housing and affordable housing, which continue to be, um, important policy topics in the state legislature. Homelessness, economic development, infrastructure, and of course, infrastructure is going to be a particularly important one in the state due to the passage of the Federal Infrastructure Act. So with that, that means a lot of money is going to be trickled down to the state and local levels. So, you know, in the next couple of months here, we will see a multitude of likely, you know, grant programs with significant pots of funding, uh, available to local jurisdictions for infrastructure. And then of course, legislation, uh, that's intimately tied to that being passed through the state legislature. Public safety, elections, government transparency. So, you know, anything having to do with the Brown Act. Uh, and obviously that, that, you know, policy area and legislation tied to that was really bolstered last year and the year prior due to the onset of COVID and virtual meetings. And then lastly, uh, a whole new section we put in there, health equity, um, at the advice of the legislative subcommittee. So supporting legislation that increases health equity across the city, county and state. As I mentioned, you know, there, there are thousands of bills going through the halls of Sacramento every year. Um, and this really does help keep us, um, really focused and helps us to create sound policy decisions. But in a, you know, swift and effective manner, uh, in order to follow along with the pretty rapid process of the state legislature. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions that you all may have. I know this is, you know, what we have based on my conversation with the legislative subcommittee. They'll certainly open any feedback or questions or concerns and I'm happy to address them.
As a reminder to the council, uh, the staff uses this legislative platform to then produce, um, position letters throughout the session. And so when those letters are sent that fall under the platform, um, they do get signed by the mayor, who is also a member of the legislative subcommittee. And then will be put on consent as received and filed, so the entire council, um, is aware.
Questions, anybody? I would like to just make a recommendation that, um, under the, um, under climate resiliency at the top, that we include supportive of, um, legislation that supports agriculture, you know, we're, we're an agricultural community and I'd like to actually call that out. And I know that there's, uh, you know, uh, assembly members Mullen and, uh, Garcia have put forth a, a new seven billion dollar resilience bomb. And there's many good things in there for agriculture in addition to, um, climate adaptation and wildfire and stuff like that. So I'd like to call out, you know, support for agriculture. I'd also like to call out wildfire just because it's so important for our area. So if we can just tuck that word in someplace.
Absolutely. Can certainly do that.
That sort of, you know, rounds out, I, I think that, that section. I did hear the bill, Seahogger contacted me about a bill that, um, would ban certain plastics and cigarette filters. And I don't have that number handy, but I think we want to watch that. Because cigarette butts are one of the biggest, you know, sources of pollution on our beaches. And, uh, you know, nearshore marine water. So we would certainly want to support something that bans the, the plastics and the cigarette filters. And I just don't get that number.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, that's a, that's a bill by Assembly Member Luis Rivas. Um, I do not have the bill number in front of me, uh, though I know that's, you know, that's certainly a high-profile one that's going to get a lot of attention this legislative session. Also note that it is one that we have on our more comprehensive list of tracked legislation already.
Sounds good. And this is a pretty robust platform, you know, it doesn't leave, you know, much unaddressed, but we're always open to input from the, the entire council. Undress is very hardworking, as is Jessica. This is something that takes a lot of time because you have to follow it almost every day, every week uh, for amendments and stuff like that. So, uh, we, we want to make their job as easy as possible by contributing, you know, constructively, you know, as we go along. So, thank you, Andres.
My pleasure.
And Jessica.
So I will now flip over, uh, to the high-profile pieces of legislation. I want to note that I only included five bills on here. This, this isn't mutually exclusive, uh, of everything we're working on by any stretch of the imagination. These also may not be the most high-profile bills in the eyes of all of you respectively. Uh, however, just for the purposes of keeping things, uh, relatively high level, I did select five bills that I feel were important, uh, for everyone to be situationally aware of. Uh, these all, all, all are also on our, uh, more comprehensive legislative matrix that we work through. Um, so I'm just going to touch very briefly on all of these five and then leave it open for any questions you might have. So the first being Assembly Bill nineteen forty-four, this is by Assembly Member Alex Lee. Essentially what this bill does is it specifies that if a member of a legislative body, such as a city council, elects to teleconference from a location that is not public, that address does not need to be identified, uh, in the notice and agenda or to be accessible to the public. When that legislative body has allowed that member to participate virtually. Uh, so essentially what this bill is, it protects, uh, privacy, uh, personal privacy of individuals statewide. Um, it doesn't matter which legislative body it is, if, if it's, you know, it could be at their personal residence, that may not be something that, that people want published. So that is nineteen forty-four. Scrolling down and moving right along, Assembly Bill twenty ninety-seven. This is by Assembly Member Laura Friedman, who is the Chair of the Assembly Transportation Committee. This has to do with parking requirements and developments. Um, essentially this bill, uh, it's a reintroduction from last year, would prohibit a public agency from imposing minimum car parking requirement or enforcing, uh, you know, minimum automobile parking on residential, commercial or other types of development if that development is located within a half-mile radius of public transit. Uh, I will note that, uh, this doesn't apply to, uh, parking spaces that have EV charging or ADA parking, of course. So those are two caveats in this law that are very, or this bill that are very port, important to be aware of. So that is another bill. That's a, this bill's a reintroduction, as I stated, of last year. Next, Senate Bill forty-five, Senator Portantino. This bill, uh, essentially, uh, this is actually one that the legislative subcommittee, uh, did recommend a support position on. So we did do a letter and we submitted it to the author and his office. And what it would do is provide funding to local jurisdictions to comply with the SB thirteen eighty-three Organic Waste Reduction Standards. Um, so those were organic waste reduction standards that were, you know, put into statute, um, a number of years ago through a Senate bill. And, uh, what, what, you know, many locals have come to see, uh, and now the state is recognizing is that, while important, those standards can oftentimes be very difficult to meet and can be, you know, uh, quite costly, uh, to local jurisdictions that are imposed with those standards. So essentially what this bill would do is upon appropriation of the legislature and the state budget, um, you know, form some sort of grant programs, uh, or even perhaps more direct allocations to local jurisdictions to help meet those goals. Um, I'm sure the language is going to be flushed out quite a bit more, uh, in the coming months, but just so the council knows and, and everyone else knows, we have been engaging with the author's office quite frequently. Um, so we will be, you know, among the first to know, uh, when they are considering more substantive amendments to, uh, move this bill along. So moving along, the last two I want to touch on briefly. Um, Senate Bill eight fifty-two, this is by Senator Dodd, he was out of Napa County. Uh, this bill would authorize a city, county, uh, city and county special district or any sort of combination of those entities to form a climate resilient district, but for the purposes of raising and allocating funding for eligible projects and the operating expenses for those eligible projects. So, you know, what, what you don't see here on this summary is what, what is an eligible project? What does that mean? So what I want everyone to think is capital projects to address, you know, significant climate issues such as sea level rise, which is obviously very significant for coastal communities, fire risk, um, which you touched on previously, Mayor, uh, flooding issues, and then any really sort of other, uh, climate-related incidences, uh, that are ongoing that, you know, communities deal with. Um, so that is that bill. And then lastly, Senate Bill nine seventeen, this is the newest introduction of any of these bills. Uh, this is, uh, the seamless bill proposal by Senator Josh Becker, um, who is, of course, our senator. Uh, I will note, this is a, this is a, uh, not the first time this proposal has been introduced in the state legislature. Uh, previously, uh, it was introduced by someone other than, uh, Senator Becker. Uh, however, what this would essentially do is it would require the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, so MTC, uh, to work alongside with transit agencies in the nine Bay Area counties to create an integrated transit fare system and structure by twenty twenty-four, so operative by twenty twenty-four. Uh, improve mapping and wayfinding for Bay Area public transit and identify corridors that need service levels and standards improvements. Uh, overall, you know, the intent of this bill ultimately is to make public transit a lot better for all of your constituents. Um, you know, this, in the, in the past, this is a big bill, uh, to put it frankly. Um, there are a lot of entities involved, uh, in, you know, what's going to come of this bill. Um, there's going to be a lot of input. I'm sure all of the committee hearings will be, uh, quite long on this. Uh, however, I will note that, you know, the senator, uh, and his staff have always been extremely easy to work with and very good at doing their jobs, uh, and of course, they represent Half Moon Bay. Um, so, you know, this is, this is certainly going to be a fun one, um, and one that we're happy to engage on upon the will of council. So I will stop there, happy to answer any questions you all may have, um, or address any sort of concerns.
Council members, any questions or comments?
I, I think if the seamless transit bill, uh, becomes law, one of the, uh, corridors would be between the coast and, uh, San Francisco and even Napa County. So it would be possible to, uh, without doing a lot of changes and, and, uh, bus routes to get a single, uh, ticket that would take you from Half Moon Bay to, uh, downtown San Francisco, for example.
Yeah, it's a big deal, for sure. I do see that John Ollum has his hand raised.
Yeah, so you ready for public comment?
Sure.
Okay. John?
Get the dog a biscuit, it's time. Hey, um, I guess, uh, the only comment is, you know, I know that, uh, this is important stuff. There's all kinds of things that out there that you need to have your eyes on. But you've got a community where you have people that are being forced, being forced out because of, they can't pay their rent. And, um, there's got a lot of stress because of COVID. Is this really the best use of the money you have? I imagine what we're talking about here, thousands of dollars have gone into this meeting. You know, thousand staff hours, just for this item, to, uh, pay attention to it, to write up the reports, to come up with recommendations. It's all great. I don't understand how it makes any of our lives here in downtown Half Moon Bay better or how it could in the short term, and we have so many short-term problems. It's going to look good on your resumes. You took all the right political positions that people expect people from the coast to take, but it's not going to fix anything, and it would be fine if it was free. But, you know, we've got a league of cities that takes positions on these things, and we pay money to them. And we got the Coastal Commission that's going to take a strong position on the, on the cigarette bus issue, which I am in total agreement with you, I hate them. I think they're the most disgusting vile things on the planet. But you've got so many bigger problems to deal with in this town, real problems that you can do something about. But we give it to consultants and to lawyers and to studies and to writing position papers and to painting signs. You might all be surprised, maybe not. I miss Rush Limbaugh, and he had a saying, the triumph of symbolism over substance. And it applies to liberals, and it applies to conservatives, it applies to everybody in government, where you've put so much effort into looking right and so little effort into doing the little things that you can. And there are so many more things that we could do if we weren't giving so many millions of dollars to consultants and survey takers and doing legislative analysis and outreach on this kind of stuff. It just should be a very low priority item, thank you.
I actually want to respond to that. And, you know, something, as a small town, um, we're not going to solve most of our problems by ourselves. We're going to do it through partnerships. And the legislative process, working with our own legislators, building relationships with other legislators and other organizations that are interested in legislation, is how we make change in this state. A lot of what happens that affects us happens at the state level. Um, just look at all the mandates that come down. Um, look at the financial resources the city's benefited from for, you know, transportation projects, um, parks projects, et cetera. You know, as a small town, the way we solve problems is working with others and, you know, leveraging outside resources. And the legislative effort, you know, is part of that. That's how I feel about it. Any other council members like to ask a question or respond? I think we're going to move on. Thank you, Undress and Jessica.
Uh, Mayor Reddick, I do need a motion to adopt the resolution approving the platform.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt the legislative platform.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Well, roll.
Councilmember Brownston?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Mayor Reddick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. So we're moving on to item three C, proposed classification and compensation changes.
Lisa, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor Reddick and council members. Um, the next item is, is actually, um, fairly comprehensive, but I will move through as swiftly as I can and, um, give you time to answer and to ask any questions as well. Um, Brian, it should be moving over, is going to actually handle the PowerPoint for me. And I see he just moved over, so. Brian, if you can go ahead.
Bear with me one second.
There we go. Okay. So tonight, um, I'm here to talk to you about proposed classification and compensation changes that staff is bringing to you on our recommendation. Um, there are, Brian, you can change it. There are four things that we'll concentrate on, um, the results of the classification and compensation study and some of the propos, proposals that we're bringing to you. The personnel reinstatements, we'll talk about a couple of new classifications. And of course, at the end, for informational sake only, we'd like to talk to you about a couple of positions that we're considering, um, creating for the city. And then, of course, questions, and then hopefully the recommendation. So first, I just would like to touch on the compensation policy, which the city council actually did put into place in two thousand eighteen. Um, the main highlight of this compensation philosophy, which led to the comp, classification and compensation study, is the fact that we actually will make a true effort to ensure that the top step of our salaries are within ten percent of the median of agencies identified in this philosophy. Um, as part of the attachments to the, as part of the attachments, I actually gave you the list of cities, um, and included some geographical information about them, and those were the ones we used for this report. At the end, you'll see that Morro Bay was also included, but I wanted to make sure you knew that we did not include Morro Bay in the median, um, because that was not part of the agreement. But we did want to include it just for informational sake, because it's a very similar, small coastal town, population-wise. Um, the differences were, the differences were very urban in this, in our sense of our location, whereas Morro Bay is, is not. So, um, moving on. So classification and compensation study, this was actually negotiated by the Representative Management Team in two thousand eighteen. Um, we finally, as you know, there was a lot of staff turnover and administration, administrative services. And one of the first things that I was told when I started was, we need to get this study done. We began to work towards it, and unfortunately, COVID detoured us a bit. We were fortunate enough to resume studying in two thousand twenty-two, and this is the results that you are seeing tonight. Um, we were very pleased to find, well, first I should mention, we did it in two parts. The first part was with Representative Management Team, because those are, that is the group that actually negotiated into their MOU. The second half of the report was local thirty-nine classifications, and we threw in confidential as well, um, so that we wouldn't have to do a third part with our consultant. We found that local thirty-nine and confidential classifications were trending only two point one, two percent below market, while RMT, Representative Management Team, was trending eight point two four. Um, I believe that's due to two of the, the things that you're going to see that we are asking the council to approve, um, because of severe discrepancies in salaries that actually brought their, their trend down. However, being eight point two four below market is still within the compensation philosophy. Um, so here are some of the things that we are asking. Um, I will kind of go through them, and then I will stop it at the end of the list. And if you have any questions about any of the specific items on this list, then, um, I will give you that opportunity. But in comparison to his peers in the compared cities, we found that our Public Works Superintendent classification was severely below the median of the rate. And I should add, which I mentioned in the staff report, is that when our consultant did this study, it wasn't titled to title. Um, the general process for a classification and compensation study is you take the job spec, job specification, and you compare the language. So as you'll notice, um, some of the, so some of the titles didn't quite match, but the job information in the specifications did. So we found when we compared what our Public Works Superintendent does, um, that his classification was almost, I believe, thirty-four percent under the median. We also found that the Recreation Coordinator was definitely mistitled, um, due to the responsibilities this position has and the work, and the work, type of work this person does. We found that we, we actually were better served to rename the position to Recreation Supervisor, which would most define what this classification does. And then, of course, the salary schedule would need to, to be increased to reflect the current responsibilities and duties. We weren't going to add anything. This was solely based on what the classification was now doing currently and in, and in the past since hired. Um, we are also adjusting the salary schedule for the Senior Management Analyst to, to correct a comp, compaction issue with the Management Analyst classification. Um, we're increasing the salary schedule of the Recreation Leader Series, which is Rec, Recreation Leader one, two, and three, um, so that it actually rises to meet and fall within ten percent of the median of their peers. We'd like to rename the Project Manager to Management Analyst. Um, this is just basically clerical error, because I believe this came and this work was done prior. We had just never gotten around to formally bringing it to council. Um, and last but not least, we'd like to reclassify the Senior Accountant to Finance Manager to truly reflect, reflect the responsibilities that he has on a day-to-day basis. So before I go into this, um, were there any questions about the, about the class and comp study recommendations? From council? Okay. Oh, go ahead. Okay, so, um, next, I'd like to talk about the reinstatement of positions. This is fairly straightforward. As you all know, um, in two thousand twenty, we implemented layoffs to avoid a financial crisis within the city. Um, we were very fortunate enough in July twenty twenty-one to figure out that through, that our economic conditions were, were actually solid enough and stable enough to actually bring back the Recreation Leader, one of the Maintenance Worker positions, and an Accounting Technician, and those positions were reinstated to city payroll. Now, as we move forward, we would like to ask that we reinstate the remaining positions, the remaining positions slash classifications that were laid off, which includes Human Resources Analyst, Executive Assistant to the City Manager, and the remaining Maintenance Worker. And finally, um, well, creation of new classifications. This is broken down into two parts. The first is the two positions that I'm going to talk about first. We actually, um, have found funding, and if approved, would go into effect immediately. The first one is a job planner job series classification called Assistant Planner. This is actually an entry, entry-level classification that is part of Assistant Associate and Senior Planner. Um, we'd like to, in creating this position, we are creating a flexible series similar to the Maintenance Worker one and two, so that we could bring people in with, with experience, because although it is entry-level, there is experience needed. But this person could grow within our organization, because they could flex upon, you know, approval of the director, upon meeting the requirements, they could actually have the opportunity to move up to an actual Associate Planner. Um, this Assistant Planner would be a cost savings, um, because right now the money that we do have budgeted is for the higher classification of Associate Planner. And so if this is approved, we would bring this one in, and obviously would go into effect immediately, and we would be able to recruit and fill it, um, for this fiscal year. The Housing Coordinator is a brand-new position that we're looking to the council to, to approve, um, the actual creation and subsequent funding for. Um, as, as there's been many discussions, I'm sure this is not an infamous. As, as there's been many discussions, I'm sure this is not an unfamiliar, unfamiliar concept, as there's been many discussions about the housing projects and the housing plan that the city is really trying to kind of move forward with. We found that a lot of these responsibilities, actually, we don't unfortunately have the staffing or the expertise on staff. And so what we'd like to do, and Jill is also here, if you have any more specific questions about this classification, but we found this position would be an asset to the department and to the city because they would undertake the, the, not only just the housing, but also be part of the planning. So everything would be more cohesive and everything would be more in tune with the city plan. And so we decided to bring this forward now as we did find that we did have funding available. And so these are the two positions that we're asking for tonight, that we asked the council to approve and also approve potential funding for them as well for the remainder of this fiscal year and moving into the next fiscal year. And then, for informational sakes only, we included in the staff report, the information about an economic development coordinator and a grants coordinator. These are two positions that we feel would benefit the city greatly. As you know, the community, oh my gosh, community, CRI. I'm drawing a blank on the acronym. Community and just.
Coastside Recovery Initiative.
I'm so sorry. Coastside Recovery Initiative, as you know. There's been a lot of work put into this and they're coming forward with a lot of their plan. And we feel that having an actual position, classification on staff would benefit and make the work more consistent. And this position would report obviously to the city manager's office, the deputy city manager, and then the city manager. We also are talking about a grants coordinator. Due to our size, we've often found that some of the larger consulting firms that help with grants aren't necessarily really productive when it comes to our needs. And so our thought was maybe we could find somebody and do this on staff, have somebody on staff that would both solely focus on development and, you know, finding the grants, implementing the grants, helping us apply for the grants. And having one on staff would definitely assist with those processes. We were, we're talking about both of these classifications potentially being term positions. And that will bring back to you with more information. And what term would refer to is there would be a year, a year period that they would actually be on staff. But there's a lot of things we have to work out with that. So thanks, Brian. So that is my presentation. I left time for questions because I know that was a lot of information and a lot of information in the staff report. So if you have any questions. I don't have any questions because I asked them, you know. Any other council members have questions? Vice Mayor?
I would like to hear from Jill about the duties expected of our housing consultant and how adding another housing staff person is necessary? And would we stop using the consulting firm? How, how does that work?
Hi, good evening. Happy to talk a little bit about the housing function as we had envisioned it and options for it. The housing consultant that's on board now is on a really small contract. We're intending to come back to you and expand that. They're doing very specialized work on housing site usability, on economic analysis of those sites, and also assisting me. We've been, we've been meeting with multiple property owners and other, other folks along the way, trying to set up potential housing development. Some of the things that the consultants doing, a few of them could be performed by the proposed staff person. Most of these specialized things though are really specific to the economist kind of role that, that our consultant has. The concept, the intent for housing staff person is to have an in-house function that would provide consistent support for housing for our community members. Just even in some of the comments that you heard tonight, we're, we're going to see what we can do to try to get some referrals to folks. But there are things that this staff person could do that we just, we just don't have the capacity for on staff now with our planners and building staff. We are, we are absolutely maxed out. So the idea was that they would be the first kind of contact for a community. They would be monitoring affordable housing that's already developed and making sure that it is being maintained as affordable. They would assist in project development as deals were made and projects are moving forward, they could become a project manager. That would be something that could transition away from the consultant and could be done in-house. So there's, there's a lot of things that could be differentiated between the consultants and what a staff person would do and different levels of work. I also anticipated, and having not recruited for this, it's hard to know what kind of interest there is and what kind of talent there is available. I will share some kind of sobering news is I'm aware of some other cities that have gone out to, to try to hire folks like this and they've had, they've had some trouble recruiting right now. This is a, this is a tough, tough environment. And so that's something that we've learned over the last couple of months. This, this position, this notion for it, our intent for it, and developing the job description is something that I started working on quite a while ago. So it's, it's been developing and that's how I, that's how I'm seeing it now. If that answers your, your questions, great. If you have more on that, please, please let me know. If the position is not approved, there would need to be a backup plan. A few years ago, when we took a budget cuts for COVID, the community development budget was cut really deeply in contract services. And we were able to keep, keep all staff. We, we were part of the furlough, of course, that everyone else was doing, but we never did reestablish our contract services budget. So we're, we're going to need some help here. You, you can see how much work there is and we're, we're spending time on this every day, but we just, we just don't have enough help.
Thank you. That does answer my question, although I'm sure it brings up as many questions as you've answered. One question, how much do we pay our consultant and how many hours are they working for us? And is that flexible or is that a fixed?
So that is definitely a bit of the consultant. Their billing rate is $200 an hour. They're the two posts that I'm working with. It's a firm though, that has folks at a lot of different levels. But the people that I talk to and work with on all of these projects are at that advanced level, highly experienced. They have a lot of connections. They've done a lot of projects and so that's what we need. They, they are people who are well-connected and know, know this industry really well. Their hours have varied a lot depending on what they're doing. So for example, you saw the request for qualifications go out recently for 555 Kelly. Tomorrow morning, we're doing the site tour for that. That was a spike in hours for one of the consultants that I'm working with because she and I wrote that together. And so it just, from week to week, it depends on what the work is. So that's, that's the good thing for the city is you pay for what you get and it's, it's great. So I think that's being managed really well. You'll see more about this in two weeks because we're going to have a housing update for you and you will meet, meet the two consultants that I've been working with. And at some point in the future, you will also see a contract on because the agreement that we have with them was approved by the city manager because it was under his authority at $30,000. But anything that goes over that is going to come to the council for your consideration.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Council member Brownstone?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on Vice Mayor Penrose's questions about this particular position. This month, we're going to have a priority setting session. I figure there might be a fair chance that affordable low-income housing could be a priority. So I want to make sure that we definitely have the resources, should that be a priority, to give it the proper amount of attention to be successful. So what I'm wondering is, it sounds like there's a little bit of a war for talent going out there. Maybe that's not a surprise, given how much emphasis has been put on the housing shortages and affordable housing everywhere in the state. So do you think, Joe, what are the pros and cons of bringing somebody in on a, let's say a one-year contract to see, you know, if they're the right person? Maybe spend a few extra consulting hours to get that person, you know, ramped up? And also to assess that person's capacity, you know, to do the job? They got a good growth mindset to increase their skillset, but not fully commit to, you know, more than a year, which I know gets in the way of getting, again, that's an issue, whether or not someone is willing to take on a one-year contract or not. Some people like that, some people don't. But with that, what are some of those pros and cons to limit how much budget we want to put towards that over a year's worth of benefits, et cetera? But also give us the option if that person might not be the right person to pursue someone else after that year is up, something like that? Any thoughts on that or?
Well, thank you for that idea. I'm under the impression, and I really respect this, that there's a lot of sensitivity about bringing on another full-time equivalent staff person and what that really commits the city to. And so I've been thinking about options and the one that you just described is something that has actually worked for the city a couple of times that I know of. And you can decide if it was successful or not. It worked for me. That's how you got me. And that's how you got Brittany, who's moved on to the coastal commission. And so it, sometimes it works because you just got, you, you find a fit. I don't know how easy it will be with housing. There, there are actually a couple of other resources that I've been looking at that the 21 elements group is actually trying to find a house, some, some housing coordinator in some of the smaller cities that haven't staffed the portion. So that's another option. They, however, are concerned that they might not find somebody as well. So I, what I'd like to say is that we'll take your idea. I'd like to go back and work with Bob on this and our, our housing consultants and bring you a couple of options. What I was happy to hear from your comments and really all of your comments is that you want to make sure that we have the right support. And how much that costs and what that looks like and the flexibility around that is important for us to think about. We're, we're happy to look through that. So I, I don't need to go on the map for this. I just, I'm, I'm, we need to go on the map to get support and we need budget for it. And if it's a position, that's one way to do it. If it's a short-term contract, that's another. If it's something else, we'll, we'll give you those options later as we develop them.
Sure.
Anyone else? I see we have one public speaker. Yes, John Ollman?
Again, this all sounds great, but I did remember right before COVID struck, that you all needed more money as you foresaw a budget deficit in the future. And so you put out a ballot measure and asked us if we would tax somebody else? Would we sign up for that? And we said, sure. Then you lost a couple hundred thousand dollars of that revenue when someone finally did do something about the homeless problem. And now it sounds like you want to hire back everybody that you laid off because of COVID prior to the fact that we knew we had a budget problem because of COVID, because we already had a budget problem prior to COVID. So I would assume that budget problem still exists. And so you want to hire, or the staff wants you to hire another $800,000 worth of people a year, and then maybe another couple hundred thousand down the road. It sounds like seven or eight people, maybe four or five, I'm not sure. And we're not talking about the, the loaded cost, about what that costs generations down the road for every hour we spend today. And I see now the magic numbers, how they work. You, your staff also threw in the, in the survey, a question about taxing other people so they could get about $850,000. So it sounds like we're going to now, you know, take $850,000 a year more in work or labor costs. And we still have, as far as I know, haven't made a library loan payment. And we're getting our butts kicked left and right in lawsuits. And we got commissioners talking smack about lawsuits and masks and lawsuits and, in voting districts. And we got another council member who's talking a lawsuit or appealing a lawsuit. And you got people that are being forced out of this town. And we're going to sue some people to buy their land that we don't want anybody to develop any housing on because of the housing retirement fund. But there's people that are leaving town because they can't afford to pay their rent. And so we want to stick it to the land, the red, the landowners or the property owners and tax them for a few thousand dollars more per year if they don't live in the house. Instead of working with them, instead of giving all the money to lawyers and consultants and to a bunch of more people, isn't there a better way to go about this and spend the money? Thank you.
Thanks, John. Bringing it back to the council for discussions? Who would like to, Council member Brownstone, thanks for diving in.
Yeah, I just want to, so Lisa, perhaps you can give, you know, in terms of the costs, a lot of the, some, you know, fair amount of the costs are also being offset by the reduction in contracting dollars. So when I looked at your staff report, what was the total additional expenditure after we subtract the contracting costs? Because I think you had that number in there, right?
Actually, we did not, it wasn't quite clear, so I didn't want to add a number I wasn't 100% confident on. But I can give you an example. So for example, the HR analyst, with all the work that we've done in the last year, we will, in comparison to having a consultant come in and help me with HR stuff, which they charge 200 to $300 per hour with negotiations, with the class and comp study, with developing new spec specifications, a lot of that work will be done now, hopefully, by the human resources analyst. The other, the two new positions that are primarily run by contract, the grants coordinator and the economic development and the housing, which is primarily all done by contract right now. We're still trying to put a number on them, which is why we're not, we're just looking for your thoughts and guidance on those, on those two classifications. But everything else, and you will see, we actually do have it more spelled out in the next item, which is the mid-year budget in terms of the cost and the, where it's coming from and, and how it looks in comparison to the rest of the budget.
Right. Yeah, I know sometimes there's concerns about do we have enough staff, do we have too much staff, you know, the city. People in the city are used to a very high level of service from our city hall. And people, you know, and we've asked folks, you know, what's your opinion of, you know, the service that you get and people living here feel that compared to a lot of other places they've lived, there's a very high quality of service. And if you look at the number of staff, and we do have a table comparing how many staff we have compared to other similarly situated cities. I mean, we're really right at the average number of folks for a city our size. And that's taking into account contracting positions like fire and sheriff, et cetera. And when I see what you're asking for, we're just like, we're asking for 10% within a median, not to be at the highest level.
Exactly.
And so I think the reason we get accolades for good service is because we hire good folks and we retain them. So, you know, as a council, I think those are the things that we take pretty seriously in terms of keeping good staff, attracting them. You know, we know it's expensive to live out here. Some people have to commute. And we do retain really good people, you know, they do have to commute and enjoy working here. And we've got a staff that I think gets along pretty well and is managed pretty well. So I don't think anything you're asking for is out of the question, or is it really well validated and justified in terms of the needs?
And if I could clarify, we're, we're asking to put back positions that we already had before COVID. And the new, of the two new positions, one is going into a spot that's already budgeted. So in reality, the only new unfunded, well, I shouldn't say unfunded, the new position is the housing coordinator. But we also do have money that is put into planning department that will actually cover that cost. So nothing that we're asking for is, is new money, so to speak. And the positions that we are asking to return are the ones that we actually laid off to avoid a financial crisis, which thankfully the city actually averted by doing.
And just to be specific, if I could just be specific, because I think it's good to just, I know you know the names were so small. The assistant planner position is underfilling Brittany's old position. So when Lisa says there's a small savings there, it's because the associate planner is higher than the assistant planner. So what's being proposed here, yeah, creating a new class, but we're actually going to underfill, we're not adding a person. That, that position's going to underfill the position that Brittany was in. So there's some savings to the, you know, a little bit of savings to the question you asked.
I would just say I have one last comment, you know, in terms of, it seems like the biggest discrepancy, I mean, it wasn't huge, but, you know, for management level being, I think it was eight percent below that, you know, median. You know, during COVID, our city hall managers put in lots of extra hours to cover for the staffing shortages. And I know of all the people who put in extra hours on weekends to cover during COVID because we were short-staffed. So I think making up that eight percent, you know, below median for that level really makes a lot of sense. And it wasn't just managers, it would have been a lot of extra hours and people volunteered time. We have an incredibly loyal staff that pitched in in all kinds of situations. So I think that's an important context to look at all this. I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'd like to focus our discussion on the, the recommendation itself, items one through nine.
And Brian can put it back up for us as well. Brian, there we go.
Okay, who would like to go next? I will go next if nobody else will. I'm happy to support one through eight. I'm not going to support the housing coordinator position. And I'm not going to entertain the A and B, the economic development coordinator position and grants coordinator position this time. I'd rather work with the housing consultants that we have. You know, the housing situation is very difficult. There aren't a lot of sites for it to be done. We don't have people banging at our door to build market-grade housing. You know, if in fact it looks like there's, you know, more demand, I'm happy to reconsider, but at this point, I'm not happy to support a dedicated housing person. I just don't, I just don't see it at this time, you know? Maybe we need actually an additional planner to hand the application load there or to work on the zoning ordinances for the LCPF day. But at this time, I can't support number nine. Anybody else? Councilmember Jimenez?
Thank you. I actually, I support, you know, one to nine, especially in number nine. You know, that number nine, it's something we should have done nine years ago. You know, that's something we had to do when it comes to the grants coordinator position. And we still need to look for funding. Maybe you might think we don't have the locations to build, but I think we do. You know, I think we have locations where we could be, we could be building housing for a community. So having the person added to the store staff, you know, number nine, you know, the, I think it's something though, you know, I'm actually, we'd be high on that position, you know? That should have been available a long time ago. You know, I'm okay with the consultant, but with the money they make, you know, by the hour, two to three hundred dollars an hour, we actually could be, have somebody, you know, full-time. Do not much of a difference on the cost. You know, and like I say, it's something we, we just have to do, you know, with everything happening. We need somebody that also has to think out of the box. You know, we need immediate results for that. So, I mean, I'm okay with number nine, you know, I'm one to nine, you know, number nine is like, I have my eye on that. So thank you, Lisa, and you have my support on all of them.
Councilmember Rarback, 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 Rarback?
Oh, I really respect Jill, and I think if Jill thinks that a housing coordinator position would make sense, then I will support her and support the creation of that position.
Vice Mayor?
I also am in favor of supporting Jill's recommendation. I have to say, I really would be reluctant to do anything more than a, than a year's term contract. I, I think the public perception can be, and, and certain people in the public believe that we talk a lot about housing. We spend a lot of money talking about housing and we don't produce any housing. And I'd like to see us dispel that notion ASAP by building housing. And if this is a necessary step to getting there, I'm all for it. In terms of the grant coordinator, I would like to see us let go of Townsend. I don't want to spend any more money reading about bills that a grant staff person could be looking into for us. And as John Ollm said, the League of Cities also follows legislation and we have, I think we have a council member on the legislative committee there. So I think that, I think we could take the money that we pay Townsend and put it toward the grant coordinator position.
Well, I wouldn't want to get rid of Townsend for legislation. You know, you'd want to cut back the contract on their grant side because they're not actually writing the grants. I'm telling you, there are, you know, probably a hundred people on the coast side alone who could write and write good grants. There's lots of people on the coast side that write grants.
Well, let's hire somebody.
Like, I just put an ad in the paper, I think, rather than going out to these big grant-writing firms, you know, that live in Southern California or Tucson or wherever, put a local ad in the paper for a grant writer. I think you'd probably have your hands full. I want to clarify, but I'm not against developing housing. We have top-of-the-line housing consultants. I'd like to know, you know, more about how we're managing them. You know, we do have a housing subcommittee of the council that could work closely with staff and actually meet, you know, with people, meet with the nonprofit housing corporations, meet, you know, with funders. I think you have to look at it more broadly. Just hiring a staff person from out of town and doesn't know anybody isn't going to solve your problems. So, you know, I'm just not ready to hire that housing person yet, but I am interested in retaining our housing contract staff. And I think we need to convene the subcommittee, the housing subcommittee of the council and, you know, put us to it. I think it's myself and Councilmember Brownstone. A lot of it is, you know, is personal and a lot of it is economics. You know, you've still got to pencil out. We have nonprofits that we're working on housing, like Coastside Hope. We have a grant program. I think we can still work on the issue, not necessarily add, you know, a pensioned staff person and all the costs that go with that. Now, I am interested in making sure our planning staff is robust enough to handle the zoning implementation as well as applications. I think Jill's short there. We're short, you know, run-of-the-mill planning staff, you know, for general purpose planning purposes. That's something I'd be willing to consider. But somebody who's dedicated to housing, I just don't think they're there yet. So I just wanted to clarify that. Councilmember Brownstone?
Yeah. Well, I agree with Councilmember Rarback that I feel if Jill is asking for this and I don't even know if the consultant we have right now, how much longer they want to be doing that work, but I really do think we need someone there full-time. I'm fine to do it on a, you know, start out with a one-year contract. I really think we're going to be pushing hard on this in the coming year, you know, that I really want to work potentially with Mid Penn or Mercy Housing, get something going, in which case that person will also have to be a really good project manager that we recruit for that, someone who, you know, has those project management. Some project management skills already in this area. But also really see how they work out for a year. And with the option to then renew, you know, like this person, but also the option to not renew, in which case, you know, it's only one year's worth of pension payments and, you know, think that through. So I think it's important for Jill to have that person. I really want our own grants coordinator. If there's all these people out here who are great at grant writing, Lisa, I think we had spoken about this, but, you know, I'd love to hire someone on salary with an incentive that they get a percentage of the money they bring in. I think you said we can't necessarily do that.
No, civil service rules don't. And I, and I should be clear, the resolution tonight is actually only for one through nine. A and B is purely informational only. We're not, we're not agreeing to create those two. I mean, you're not, you're, we're just, we wanted to come and kind of vet it out and get all this good feedback. But the creating, the, all the new positions will only be one through nine in the resolution.
Listen, we need to move this meeting along. We have another regular item plus the items that were pulled. So if everybody is satisfied, their questions are answered, I'd like to move forward to a motion and a second.
Joaquin hasn't said anything yet.
He has, actually.
I already did.
Oh, okay. I would like to move that we we go ahead and adopt a resolution authorizing the changes to the job classifications and salary schedules as seen in staff recommendation numbers one through nine.
Second.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Mayor Reddick?
No.
Motion carries. Okay, item three D?
Okay, I am going to turn the table over to Kenneth Stiles, our senior accountant, and he will present the mid-year budget.
Welcome, Kenneth.
Good evening. Brian is manning my PowerPoint. All right, thank you. So good evening, Madam Mayor, Council and members of the public. Tonight, I will be presenting the mid-year review for our fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Next slide, please. We have a pretty short agenda tonight. We will be discussing the major revenues and those adjustments, the expenditure adjustments, the capital improvement plan, and then finally how we look going forward into the next budget process. On this slide, we have our three major revenues, TOT, property taxes, sales and use taxes. This table highlights what we had budgeted for, what the actuals were at the midway point in December, what we, and how it compares to the prior year. Starting with TOT, we received about fifty-two percent of what we budgeted. Initially, that may look like we are doing exactly how we planned, but we always compare it to how we did last year. At this time, last year, we received forty percent. So comparing fifty-two against the forty, the signals that our TOT is overperforming. We're very optimistic about our TOT numbers. Right now, we're estimating that we're going to end the year around seven point two, which is about a nine hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six thousand increase, almost a million. That is a big leap, but we think this is a very conservative one. Right now, this is only considering that these last few months are the same as they were in twenty twenty-one. And considering that the COVID restrictions are waning, there is potential for growth in this category. With property taxes, we received forty-seven percent versus what we did forty-eight last year. We want to adjust this down by about two hundred and fifty-one thousand. I do want to note and be clear that property taxes are not decreasing year over year, they are increasing year over year. We were just We were just a little bit too optimistic at that growth rate when we adopted the budget. And then with, finally, with sales and use taxes, we received 35% right on the money as far as what we did last year. So we are not recommending any adjustment with this category. So with our major revenues, it's a total increase of 715,000. Other revenue adjustments, some have gone up, some have gone down. The net of that is 503. The big ones are being the golf facility fees that last year didn't do well. We think we're going to have another good year there. And then finally, our grants. Overall, the total revenue adjustment for the general fund is 1.2 million. And again, we are most, as you can see, most of that is TOT that we're pretty optimistic as we go into the spring and summer months. Next slide. Here are our expenditure adjustments for salaries and benefits. This totals 239,000. You can see the, the itemized detail of that below as discussed previously in the previous presentation. The only addition there is the Assistant City Clerk that went to council about a month ago. This replaces the Deputy City Clerk with no changes to FTE count. There is the salary savings, so we are acknowledging the salary savings of the assistant, the associate planner being downgraded to the assistant planner. The housing coordinator, the classic conversation study recommendations and their reinstatements. For operating expenditures, it's an increase of 268,000, 53,000 for cities managers office for econ and recovery initiatives. Public Works, they just received a 20K grant that they want to have a management expenditure for, as well as a vulnerability, vulnerability assessment. And then finally, community development, 150,000. This is for support for the housing element in the general plan. This is to housing consultants and the development of an environmental review. Overall, the operating adjustment total increase is 507,000. For CIP, we had a big list in the staff report of what we want to adjust. There are four new projects that we would like to fund for a total of 820,000. The bulk of that is the Main Street Safety Improvement Project. This project is to add two new bike lanes along Highway One. And then for CIP adjustments for existing projects, those total about 324,000. Overall, CIP, we want to adjust about 1.1 million, want to put funds back into our capital project program. So this is the financial outlook of our general fund. We have our actuals how we ended the year, last fiscal year. These are audited numbers. The second column, the adopted budget, these are the numbers that we adopted back in June. And if council ward approved the recommended changes, we have the revised budget in the last column. With our revenues at 19.5, our expenditures at 20.7, this will leave us with a balance of about 9.9 million, with eight of that being reserves. Overall, that leaves us with unassigned funds, funds that we haven't assigned a purpose to yet. 1.3 million is quite a bit, but we're recommending to leave it and formally assign them through the whole fiscal year process. We have some big projects coming up, namely Carter Park, that needs a $500,000 matching. And so we have some things that we want to look and consider all at once through the fiscal year budgeting process. Next slide, please. With that, the recommendation is to adopt the attached resolution to amend the fiscal year 2021, 2022 operating and capital budget. And with that, I will take any questions.
Questions from council members? I see no hands raised. I see no hands raised among the public either. Would anybody like to make a comment or a motion?
I move that we adopt the, can you put the resolution up again?
I can do it if I have it here, but.
That we adopt the attached resolution to amend the fiscal year 2021, 22 operating and capital budget.
Just so you know, I'm going to be voting no. And the reason is, we've only got four months for the rest of this fiscal year. And I, we haven't had our priority setting and listening sessions yet. We've heard in the survey that people are concerned about traffic. I think this is, the whole discussion of increasing the budget now is not very timely. So I'm going to be voting no. We'll be on a roll call, please.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rorabak?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Mayor Reddick?
No.
Do we have any commission and committee updates? Oh, wait, we have three more items. Okay, let's do it. Let's start with item, is it one?
Was it one C?
If you want to go in order, Madam Mayor, I would start with one C. And I believe Councilmember Jimenez had a question or comment or wanted to pull that item, which is the Housing Element Annual Progress Report.
Does Jill want to make a brief summary?
Joaquin, have a, just a question or a comment or?
Actually, it was a question and comment. I see on the report that it was addressed about ADUs being considered affordable housing. And I want to better understand that how is that ADUs to be considered affordable housing? And if that could be explained to me in the chart, and maybe yes, better understand. Because I don't consider ADUs, you know, affordable housing, especially when our families are not being approved, you know, to lease or rent, you know, ADUs.
Jill, could you respond to that?
I will try to, yeah. So staff agrees with Councilmember Jimenez. It's true, ADUs are not specifically affordable housing. They are listed in your annual housing element report simply because they are part of the housing production cycle and whether they were part of a planning review process or a building review process where we're issued a certificate of completion. And they occupy the column for moderate income because they, there are rent studies that support that ADUs have been renting, actually at, most of them in the low-income category, understanding that that is as defined by HUD and the very, very high median income that affects what those levels are in San Mateo County. And so they qualify to be categorized the way that they are. And whether they are truly affordable to community members, as you're thinking about them tonight from our public comment and your own work, they may not be a fit. And I do want to just note a couple more things about them though, because I think it's, it's important for this report. We are seeing this in Happy Bay through the applicants who speak to us about why they're building ADUs. And it's also been come through in a recent study done by the Turner Group through UC Berkeley. A lot of them are being built for family members and often for young adults, sometimes grandparents on a fixed income. Sometimes the homeowner builds the ADU and moves into the ADU and then rents up their house. And we do have a number of cases where adult children with disabilities are able to find independent housing through having an ADU. This is something that is true to my own family, my brother's family, and it's really important. So it's supporting extended families and allowing for improved living environments where families have, can have separate quarters, but also be together and save a lot of money because you're not having to buy more land. Land is obviously the, the commodity that is so challenging. So to answer your question, Councilmember Jimenez, they, they aren't hitting the sweet spot of what you're looking for. And we understand, they are an important housing type. They do get reported on your annual report. And we will always keep counting them because state ADU law is facilitating them. They're very, very popular with your community. Community is really appreciating having them as an option. And we're doing the best we can with them. So I hope that helps. And if you ever want to sit down and talk about them again, we can, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you, Jill. One more, there's a few more questions about how many of the ADUs, what a percentage of ADUs actually are rented for family, or are built for family members? Do you have an idea about what the percentage?
I don't, we don't have a city-specific owner study like that. We can do something kind of anecdotal. Throughout the Bay Area, the, the study that I did cite, about 50% of the ADUs are rented to folks, just, just like rental housing, so people that they might not know. More on the order of 20% of them are going to family members or, and then there's a percentage to friends. And then some of them are built and not rented at all. They are, there's some folks who want to have an ADU for convenience purposes and they don't even use it as a housing unit. Do remember that your ADU ordinance does not allow the use of ADUs as short-term rentals. So they are really supposed to be housing or serve as some kind of an addition to the residential development on the property.
One more question, when it comes, you know, to the, what's called, to the arena cycle, would, would they be counted as housing that's be provided out of the 480 units that are supposed to be built in six years? Are they part of the count or not?
So I'm, I'm going to split Harrisburg just a second. The current housing element cycle has a regional housing needs allocation arena of 240 units. And so the report that you're seeing tonight is, I think, year seven in your eight-year cycle. And the, the units that you see, those ADUs that are in the table, are counted against that arena at the moderate income level, even though some of them will qualify for low. We've been conservative with what we're reporting to HCD. Going forward, you referenced 480 units. That will be in our next housing element. That's our new arena. And that's for the cycle six or the, the 2023 housing element. So it will be a whole new eight-year cycle. And what cities are allowed to do is to count how many ADUs they've issued building permits for in a couple, two or three years before this cycle starts and hit an average and demonstrate what typical production is going to be. And then you can count, you can project eight years' worth of that for the new housing element. We're looking ahead at maybe, it might be about 80 units. It would not come close to fulfilling arena obligation that we are going to have in cycle six. We're going to have a lot of other housing strategies to address housing seats and build-out development to serve the 480 units that you're, you're noting.
So when building these AD, ADUs will not affect the measure D amount of, or growth in Happy Bay?
Probably.
When it comes to building, you know, for the whole of the community?
Well, right now, so it just, the way, let's just note the, the mechanics of it. ADUs at this time are required to get a measure D allocation. We are reviewing measure D allocations right now for 2022. And we will be bringing the rankings to the Planning Commission in an upcoming meeting. We've had more applications than allocations. I do want to note that we actually have used up almost all of the allocations, including within downtown at this point because of a number of active downtown sites. But ADUs do make up a lot of them. And what they're not doing is, they're not blocking affordable housing. What they're doing is they're, they tend to be blocking single-family homes. Affordable housing, if we have an application for affordable housing, it's going to rank higher than an ADU. And it will get the allocations.
Any other questions for staff? Let's see. So do we need a motion to confirm receipt or is hearing the, the topic sufficient, Catherine?
We need a motion to confirm receipt.
I'll make a motion to confirm receipt of the 2021 Housing Element Annual Progress Report.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rorabak?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Mayor Reddick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So we're moving on to item one D, amendment of the COVID prevention policy. Harvey, do you want to begin just telling us what your intent is here?
Yeah, I was the one that brought this up originally last year. And I need clarification because my reading of what the staff report says is that contractors working inside the city will be required to be either fully vaccinated or have twice-weekly COVID tests, negative COVID tests. I read that include sheriff's deputies who are contractors and are working within the city limits. And that was my original intent because sheriff's deputies have contact with our citizen. And I would like them to either be fully vaccinated or at a minimum be tested twice a week. So I don't, it wasn't clear to me what the intent or the effect of this, the staff resolution was. I would certainly want to make sure that our sheriff's deputies agree, or the sheriff agrees that his deputies will be either fully vaccinated or tested at least twice a week. That's why I pulled the item.
Does staff want to respond to that, city manager or deputy city manager?
Sure, I can, I can start and then kick it over to Lisa and Catherine or possibly both. So I, I'm actually looking at page three of the COVID prevention plan. It's attached. It's attached to the resolution that's before you. And that's where I think the relevant section that Councilmember Rarback refers to, where we've added what was directed by council, and that is that all city employees and onsite contractors employed by the city must submit proof of vaccination. That's on the bottom of page three. And then there's more detail about how that would be processed. The intention of that, and I agree with Councilmember Rarback, it's probably not clear. And so Lisa and Catherine can weigh in. They've put some thought into how that could be clarified. Because as Councilmember Rarback said, he read that a different way than we intended. So we probably should make it clear. Our direction that we took from council was to apply the mandate to all city employees. And then I don't remember the exact words that were used to define onsite, but it meant those types of employees that are working, quote-unquote, shoulder-to-shoulder with us. And there's probably five or six examples of those employees. I'll give the two obvious ones, our city attorney and our building official. And so that was the intention of how it was written when the phrase onsite was used. But as I said, if there's revised direction on that or if other council members intended something else, we'd be happy to hear it now. And then, as I said, Lisa and Catherine have worked on some possible language that could be substituted to make that clear. But that was our intention, that it would apply to the five or six employees who we consider different than other contractors, construction contractors, and then also the sheriff's contract. Councilmember Rarback referred to that one specifically.
Councilmember Brownstone?
My recollection was we were trying to align with what the county was requiring. Is that right? Bob?
Well, possibly, but if that was the case, that's not what happened. Because the county's policy is that they mandate all employees to have vaccination or once-a-week testing. And what we have before you is mandatory vaccination or twice-a-week testing. So it is not quite aligned with what the council did. I think that was part of the point.
I remember. That's right. And the guideline, the reason we're asking for twice is because we know that there's significant percentage of inaccurate tests, sometimes not really necessarily to the test, but how people took it, et cetera. And so having two tests provides for more accurate and reliable result. Thanks, Bob, for helping me remember it.
Councilmember Jimenez?
One of the things that we addressed during that meeting, we also talked about, you know, the mask that were going to be used by the deputies, the A95s. Is that going to be enforced by them using the A95s and not the other, the cloth and masks that they were, that they have been wearing?
Well, maybe I'll ask Lisa to weigh in on that. As everyone knows, those rules are constantly changing. And so while that might have been the direction a month ago, there's been recent direction that has affected the requirement for masks. So Lisa, maybe you can, yeah, Lisa made a comment to me this morning that the document before you is already now outdated because there's now new direction from the state and the county on this. So Lisa, do you want to address what the mask requirement is now?
Yes. So as you probably all have heard, the governor actually moved forward to eliminate the mask regulation for unvaccinated people indoors. The county followed suit. And so, and it was effective today, which was surprising because usually they do give a week's notice. But they also actually lifted the mask mandate. We included, so what is in this prevention policy, I should clarify? This is a staff document because that is what we were focused on. And then I included language for the onsite contractor employees because I knew that was something that we wanted. But since this is focused on staff, the way we defined onsite contractor employee was somebody who reported to indoor city facility, who worked in indoor city facilities next to city staff and had direct interactions with them. We, you know, depending on the direction you want us to go, we can always, you know, again, separate out the contracting piece of it. But as Bob mentioned, again, the masking, the masking regulations are now changing. And as you know, we can actually keep our policy the same. The prevention plan is meant to be a living, breathing document. And so it's changed so many times since COVID started. And so we tried to keep it current. And this was incorporating the, what the mask, the vaccine mandate that the council had requested. We had decided to incorporate it into the internal COVID prevention policy. So I'm sorry, Councilmember Jimenez, to answer your question, at this point in that policy, we are not regulating the types of masks that our contractors are wearing or the sheriffs are wearing. And actually, anyone who works in City Hall or any of the city facilities was following the same guidelines as all the employees.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I see we have one raised hand of a public member.
Yes, thank you, Mayor John Olin.
Okay, well, it's going to be the same theme. The rules that you're talking about are changing so fast. And you have people out there at the county and state level that are taking the political heat and have a lot more legal expertise and firepower to come up with rules that will stand in court and will give you political cover should they not. We are wasting so much money talking about this when it doesn't even matter and it might not even be an issue, or it could be a completely different issue. How are you going to sunset this thing? Are you going to enforce it for what, forever? How are you going to do that? And why are you talking specifically about the Sheriff's Department? I mean, I know what the real backstory is. I get it, what you're after. You want to put the sheriff in a position so that he leaves. So that you force him to make a decision he won't make. I get it. That's an excellent plan, I suppose. It would be a great plan if you had the money to start your own department, but you don't. And you've already gone on record, I believe, to Dr. Penrose, is that she's ready for a fight. She's accepting that we're going to get some, there's going to be some blowback about this. And if it goes legal, well, the lawyers will get another million bucks, but we'll stand our ground. Over what? And even if nothing else happens today, you still wasted another $10,000 or $20,000. There are people who cannot afford to live in Half Moon Bay, and we're talking about this. Unbelievable. Thank you.
Thank you, John. No other speakers, Mayor.
Okay, so awaiting council direction. Councilmember Rarback?
I move that we include the sheriff's deputies as onsite contractors who are subject to the requirements of the COVID protection measure.
Discussion, council members.
Madam Mayor, before you discuss, you need a second first.
I'll second it.
Do we have discussion?
Do we ever get an answer to the question of where the sheriff stands on this?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Brownstone, yes. I talked to them previously when this first came up a couple of months ago. And I think I reported back to the council and publicly that the sheriff himself was on record in a newspaper article. And I was also told by a representative of the sheriff department that they intended to follow the county policy, which is vaccination mandate. And if you don't show proof of a mandate, then you're subject to weekly testing that the county administers. And they are proceeding with that program. I spoke to a representative of the sheriff this morning, or this afternoon, I should say. And they confirmed, they confirmed once again that that's what they intend to do.
So the only difference is between getting one test or two tests at this point from what the county requirement is? Do I have that right? Lisa shaking her head, yeah? So...
If I understand the motion correctly, I think that would be what I would take as the difference, yes.
And the sheriff specifically said, no, I don't want him doing two tests?
No, I can't say that they put it that way. They said they intend to follow the county policy. Which, when you hear them say that, sounds like a very reasonable position for them to take. Since they thought through that policy, they worked it out with their unions. And, you know, we've been consistently following the county's lead during the last two years of COVID. That's their position, and they feel it's a pretty reasonable position, and they're going to follow the county policy.
Is that policy actually going to stand? Are they going to be revising that policy, given, you know, all the relaxation of restrictions?
That I don't know.
I'm in, I'm in constant contact with the HR director for the county. And right now, there's no plans to change it. The language actually moves with, gives them the same authority that we gave the city manager that depending on what the state and federal government directs, that the policy may be changing. But right now, they, it's working for them, so they are just going to keep things as is. The masking mandate, they've actually changed, but they haven't updated the policy. So they're still requiring vaccination or tests. I don't think that's going to change until, until we're far beyond the point we're at now.
So could we have the staff recommendation up? I think what Councilmember Rarback is proposing is an amendment to that recommendation?
I actually have it online.
You want me to share my screen?
Oh, please, Bob. I only have the resolution. No, I only have the resolution.
It's not an amendment, it's a clarification.
Well, but...
Right, I don't know if the discussion's over with, but I'm fine to go with the one test if the sheriff's going to be adamant about not going two tests because trying to enforce that just seems...
I am too. I agree with you.
Yeah. It doesn't make sense. All you're doing is setting up a shooting range.
Can you see my, am I sharing my screen or is it my emails?
No, it's your screen.
Okay, so the recommendation is at the top of the staff report, adopt a resolution amending the COVID Prevention Plan. That's staff's recommendation, and the amended plan is attached to the resolution. As I understand the motion that Councilmember Rarback made, he would, he's requesting, I guess, a clarification. We, if that motion were to pass, we would probably recommend adding a phrase in there to clarify, as he did in his motion, that onsite contractors also meant the sheriff. That's how I heard his amendment. So we, so if that were to go through, we would, we would make that red line, add a phrase to the, a sentence in the plan that clarifies that onsite contractor would include the sheriff's department.
Yeah, I don't, I don't support the, asking the sheriff to test twice a week, twice a week. I don't support that change. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I don't support the change for the sheriff for the reasons that you've given. And I don't think that we can ask other onsite contractors to do it differently. So I'd be happy with once-a-week testing. You know, I don't think the tests are all that good, and I don't think having a second test is a guarantee that you're getting a better result. So...
Based on everything I've said, I would agree with you. Yeah.
Okay, so leave the onsite contractor language the same, but amend the program to reduce it down to one test per week. So either a vaccine, a vaccine, proof of vaccine, or they have to test once a week.
Right.
Okay.
And that was not my motion.
No, I'm sorry. That's right. You still have a motion.
Yeah, Catherine, maybe you or Jessica can weigh in. So there is a motion and a second on the table. It either, I think, has to be voted on or the person who made the motion, you know, can amend or pull it. But there is a motion on the table at this point.
A competing motion can be put on the table.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'll offer the competing motion that we move forward with what we have, with amending it, that we only need one test if proof of vaccination isn't offered.
I'll second that. So the last motion goes first. Could we have a roll call on Robert's motion, please?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
No.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Mayor Reddick? Motion carries.
Now, do we still go forward with a roll call on Councilmember Rarback's motion?
No, my interpretation would be that mooted, the first motion.
I thought the motion by Councilmember Rarback was that the sheriffs be named as onsite contractors. Am I, am I wrong, Harvey?
Partially. I wanted to make it clear that the policy, which required onsite contractors to either be vaccinated or test twice a week, include the sheriff. That was what I had moved. And apparently, as Catherine said, it's been mooted by the successful motion that said that only one test a week would be required, which is consistent with the county policy for the sheriffs.
I would like to make a motion that onsite contractors include the sheriff's office.
I don't hear a second.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yes, I mean, I think all of our contractors are being asked to do something that is for the general public good. And I don't see a difference between onsite contractors who come into City Hall and sit next to a staff person and a sheriff who stops someone on the street to talk to them. I think, I think they should be treated equally, and that's, that's the point of my motion. It has nothing to do with the testing or the vaccination. That's, that's the motion we just passed.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Penrose, if I can make a point of clarification on what you just said. So the current policy does not apply to any contractors in the traditional sense that you are thinking of contractors. When I, when, the way I just took what you said and wanting to apply it to the sheriff the same way we would apply it to other contractors, the way I took that was you're believing that this policy applies to construction contractors, our janitorial service, our engineering consultants. And this policy in no way was intended to apply to all those contractors and consultants that do business for the city. The use of the word onsite contractor was very limited to only apply to five positions that work at City Hall. And I can name those five positions. One is Catherine, the city attorney. One is Ferris, our public works inspector. We have a building official, I can't remember his name. I believe Bridget in the planning department, and Ray, who is a project manager. We, we had treated those five contractors differently. And those, it was the intention of this policy that the policy would apply to those five, but no other... to those five, but no other contractors or consultants. So I hope that maybe clarified the direction you were trying to go.
That does clarify it, and I would like to withdraw my motion.
Yeah, and we actually had a robust conversation about contractors, and specifically decided to not include contractors because of the Titanic job that would involve. Right, so.
Thanks for that clarification.
Thank you. Very good. All right, we're moving on to item 1E, indefinite suspension of Main Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project.
And I believe Mr. Doughty is here, if he can show himself. And we know that this one came because a comment was made during public forum by Mr. Ullam, who I see is still here, and it seemed like he just had a general question or comment about why that item is on the agenda and what, what it means. And so maybe John could just provide a short summary of the item, and then if there's any questions, we can go from there.
Sure, thank you, and good evening. The council received, or the city received recently a cease and desist letter, which led to subsequent conversations regarding the bridge and how we might proceed forward. Out of those, out of those conversations came a conclusion, which are reflected in the resolutions and the findings, as well as in the staff report, of several things, including that the bridge overall cost had increased significantly since we initially began work. Two, that the efforts by Caltrans and their review process were putting tremendous constraints on our ability to retain the historic nature of the bridge. And through those conversations, we were asked to come back to this meeting to formalize and ask for formal action and direction. Basically, I will say this, that the bridge is the same bridge, in essence, that was put forth to the Main Street Bridge Advisory Committee. Mr. Ullam had raised concerns that, that this bridge had gotten, was a completely different bridge. Basically, the city attorney had, has confirmed that the bridge that was and continues to be under review unless removed, was actually consistent with what was approved and moved forward with in 2018. So I just want to make that clear. The other piece is the dollar amount. The, I just want to clarify, the city proceeded forward with design and environmental review under an agreement with the, with Caltrans that basically provided for roughly an 11 and 1/2% share of cost by the city, with obviously the 88.5% being the, the federal government's or the Caltrans responsibility to pay. So in the staff report, it reflects basically a $750,000 that had been reimbursed back by the state. That was their 88 and 1/2% share. We have about an $80,000 of city money that has been spent on that project. So it's far, far less than what was, I think, anticipated or that Mr. Ullam was indicating with that. So that's how that, that works, just to be clear in terms of the dollar amount on that. From that perspective, we are here presenting to you recommendations, and those would be to suspend indefinitely the project, remove it from the capital improvement program, inform Caltrans of our intent to close, to stop the project and close out, let the contractor, Biggs Cardosa, and allow them to tell their subcontractors that we were shutting down the project and suspending the work. And finally, to send a note, or send the letters out to each of the representatives from the Main Street Bridge Advisory Committee, informing of this decision and thanking them for their service. So those were the main recommendations coming forth for you tonight. I hope that answers your questions. I'm happy to respond accordingly if there are other questions.
Could we hear from John Ullam, please?
Yes. John Ullam?
Well, thank you. Thank you for sticking around. Now, first of all, it'd been really nice if you would have included the lawsuit, or the threat, or whatever it was that sparked this in the staff report, because obviously it was a major factor in your decision. And because it brought it up, and, but I don't know what the heck, what, what was it, what sparked it, you know? And, you know, because your lawyer gave a, an opinion in 2018, well, my experience is you'll get the opinion you want. And what I remember is, a lot of you were with us when we were very specific about what we wanted, and what the community wanted, and they were voted on, and they wanted it. And so my understanding is there's a lot of people on the Main Street Bridge community that weren't really happy with how things went. And it sounds like our share was 88,000, so, and that was about 12%. So let me just kind of round the numbers up and say that that sounds like a $900,000 project so far. And it's not going forward. And so what's Caltrans going to do? Are they going to want their money back? Is that a, and how did it get to be that kind of money? I mean, it's just astounding. Even if you only wasted our money a little bit, state money is our money too. And, you know, it could have gone to something better. I'm sure the guys at Biggs Cardosa love this town, because how much money have they made off this bridge? And not a dang thing has been done. You know, you haven't even done the basics that we all knew needed to be done 2014, just some basic repairs, just, you know, hold it together. And it's the same old, same old. You're going for a home run, you want to make a big, huge play. Somebody decided this needed to be a big project. And so this simple project, there used to be a $7 million project to replace the bridge. It's now, what, a $13 million project that doesn't replace the bridge? Do you get it? How screwed up that is? How bad of management that is? And how it's decisions like that, and it's like this whole meeting, and what's been going on in the last year. It's decisions like that that take away the flexibility to take care of people in your community that are hurting. Because we're taking stands on things, and we're fighting battles that need to be fought on principle. And we want to tell people how to live their lives. And we want the best bridge we can get. And we want to bring in every freaking federal dollar we can get into this community, because federal dollars make money for somebody. And who cares if a million, million bucks just got wasted on a bridge? I mean, it's no big deal, right? I'm out of here. Good night.
All right, thank you, John. Next, we have Art Reynolds.
No one laughed. So I sort of feel like I have this relationship of a parent and a teenager with the city council at large, where every time I open my mouth, they're afraid they're going to get yelled at, or criticized, or otherwise annoyed. Having been through the bridge debacle the first time, and before I got involved again here, I was very, very aware of how hard it is to stop institutional inertia once it gets going. And there was clearly a lot of inertia here, and it is to the credit of each and every one of you, from the city attorney, who, who did what was right for the city, to Mr. Doughty, who I know is taking hits for this, and to the city council, who are going to receive comments and questions about why are you killing this project. The point is, the project had gotten out of scope and out of scale, and it wasn't appropriate for Half Moon Bay. So basically, all I want to say is thank you to each and every one of you for doing or acting in what I believe is the best interests of the city. I do hope at some point we can get a discussion going about some minor rehabilitation of the bridge, because it, like anything, needs care and feeding. But with that said, again, I just want to thank you for, for getting this one absolutely 100% right. Thanks.
Excellent. That concludes. Vice Mayor Penrose, Mayor Reddick, appears to be off for a minute. Do you want to?
Yes, could we have the resolution? And I'll ask for a motion.
I'm here.
Do, do, do councilmembers need to see the, see the recommendation on the screen? I can do that if you do.
I think that would be helpful, just because it has multiple parts.
Sure. Give me a minute.
I mean, I could make the motion. I'm reading the agenda. I can just go ahead and do that. I move that we adopt the staff recommendation, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to, one, remove the Main Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project from the draft fiscal year 2022-23 capital improvement program and capital budget. Two, send a letter informing Caltrans of the city's intent to suspend indefinitely all work on the Main Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project, and to initiate project closeout. Three, send a letter to Biggs Cardosa Inc., formally suspending all design and environmental services work and directing closeout to contract. Four, send a letter to each member of the Main Street Bridge Advisory Committee, thanking them for their service, and informing them of the city council decision to indefinitely suspend work on the Main Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project, and sunset the committee. And five, take all their actions reasonably necessary to indefinitely suspend and close out the project in fiscal year 2021-22.
Seven.
Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Rorack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Mayor Reddick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, do we have any commissioner committee updates?
Not this evening, Madam Mayor.
Okay. City council reports. So those of you on various boards and commissions, do you have anything to report this morning?
I went to the Peninsula Clean Energy Board meeting, and they're working very hard to implement a DEI, diversity, equity, and.
Inclusion.
Inclusion, thank you. Policy. And they've also worked to, with other CCAs, to buy long-term storage, battery storage, so that by 2025, the, the plan is to have 100% renewable energy on a 24 by 7 basis, so that even when the sun isn't shining, they'll, will be buying power for us that is 100% renewable. So that's a good thing. My report.
Great, thank you, Harvey. Harvey, I'm guessing that PCE probably does their own tracking of legislation that's important to them. So if you wouldn't mind, like, just sharing that with our legislative subcommittee, just so we can see what other folks are supporting or opposing, I think it would be helpful, especially since, you know, we're going to be doing our climate action plan and things. So I think that would be a helpful thing to do.
Okay, will do.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I.
You're muted.
I attended the commute.org meeting, whose board I sit on, and brought some information about e-bikes, grants that are going to be coming up in April for the use by our farmers here on the coast. And it's a, it's a program that is very exciting. We're very thrilled that Patrick Gilster, who's head of the, the transportation grant funding program, thinks we're a good candidate. I also attended a CCG meeting, my first CCG meeting, and got a, sort of a, my first idea of what the CMEQ committee, and I can't think of what it stands for right now, I'm too tired, will be doing. But it has to do with transportation and environmental sustainability. And I attended a, a hard board meeting, and I was reappointed to the board for the next three years. That's housing and endowment and regional trust advisory board.
Great. Yeah, it's the CK congestion management and environmental.
Congestion, right.
That's a big deal committee, a lot of interesting people on it.
Yes, they are.
Yeah. So I attended the CCG meeting, where Debra was appointed to the CMEC committee, and I also was appointed to the, the CK Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And I'm a little late for this round of grants, but the, the county BPAC is, has been reviewing and scoring applications for federal transportation dollars for bike lanes and things like that. Would have been nice to see Half Moon Bay on there, but. And then also, I was, I attended the One Shoreline meeting yesterday afternoon, and was reappointed with Supervisor Pine. He's been reappointed as chair, and I've been reappointed as vice chair for, for a two-year term. Debra and I have been working hard at SAM, getting ready to review the general manager, and also to review the capital improvement program for the coming year, which will feed the budget process that is coming up. So we'll be talking about funding big-ticket infrastructure projects. And then we're also looking at a, we're going to start looking at a plan to move the electrical system of SAM above ground. Right now, it's underground on the west side of the plant, and it's subject to groundwater, raising groundwater, and sea level rise eventually. So we're looking at a plan to move that, and we'll have some dollar figures to discuss in the future. Debra, do you have something to add?
Yes. I received information from the San Mateo County Library staff that they will be increasing their hours and opening for the first time since COVID started on Sundays. They intend to get back to full programming, and they are very excited about it, and I hope we will put a banner up outside the library announcing this. So city should be very happy.
Anybody else? Okay. Anybody want to talk about future agenda items? Otherwise, we can adjourn.
Yes, I would like to put on the, a future item on the agenda about the annexation of Moonbridge, looking to the annexation of Moonbridge into Half Moon Bay.
I would second that, with the proviso that it not be something that come up within the next couple of months. I think we have a lot on our plate right now, and I'd like to, to consider the, the question. But I'm thinking maybe in the next fiscal year.
Yeah, well, I think we need to discuss it as part of our priority setting in March. So we'll have a chance to discuss it, you know, at those meetings.
As I understand, there's new information that it shows about the possibility of the annexation of Moonbridge into Half Moon Bay.
Well, the council needs to put it on its list of priorities. So we need information from staff, you know, about what the process is. It is a LAFCO process, and. It is a LAFCO process and it's quite a detailed process. So we want to hear about what the process is and, you know, get it on the work program. So I don't anticipate, I, I think we're gonna be talking about it, you know, more quickly than anything we could put on an agenda right now, because our, our priority setting meeting is coming up this month.
Yes.
In November, I had requested, what Joaquin just requested, and I was told that this would be discussed at our priority setting session. So that's all consistent that we need to get it done, not in a year's time, but at this month, when we set our priorities on the 22nd, I think. So.
Well, it's not something that's gonna be done at a couple of meetings, right? It's a process.
I understand that, but all processes start somewhere.
Yeah. But we need to evaluate it against other priorities.
Sure.
And get information. So that's, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
All right? So this meeting is adjourned.
Bye.
Thanks everybody for being there. Appreciate it. Bye.